Take this as the planning board here?
Yes.
Yes.
Trying to be.
The end gallery and the other gallery.
Okay, we have, uh, we have wifi in here?
It's the public.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
It's the public.
Yes, sir.
I'm connected right.
Password for it or?
It's public, no tr- there's no, um.
Rockport Library, Public Library, it's called.
I see. Yep, I see it.
Thank you.
You got dressed up and everything, huh?
Who?
You.
Me?
Yes.
That's bundled up.
No, that's me. I've been chilled all day.
This is the forty degree weather that's colder than thirty.
Okay, everybody powered on, the wifi if you need it, all set?
Thank you.
Good, good, all right. All right, Jeff, I'm ready when you are. Good evening, my name's Joe Stranowski, and I'm the Chair of the Rockport Planning Board. At this time, I would like to see John Veman, who is an alternate, as a full voting member. And with that, we've got a quorum to begin this evening's meeting. So I'm officially calling this meeting to order at five thirty PM on March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, the planning board is comprised, that's right. Planning Board is comprised of volunteers appointed at the discretion of the Select Board, and our charge is to ensure that the applications that come before us comply with the town's land use ordinance and com- Rockport Comprehensive Plan. The Board must determine whether there is sufficient evidence in the record, which is the material supplied by the applicant to support a decision to approve the application. This is accomplished by comparing the information in the record to the requirements of the ordinance statute, or statute. And so, uh, this evening's meeting is going to be, um, review of ordinance amendments. We don't have any, uh, project plans, site plans before us this evening. So we've got, excuse me, a number of, uh, ordinance revisions that we will review. We'll receive public comments on these ordinance revisions. And, um, Orion, uh, while you're walking across the room there, could you tell me, did we have any comments?
No, so, well, we did have like a couple of clarifying questions that came in.
Okay.
And I satisfied those, um.
So no questions that need to be considered?
No questions that need to be considered.
Okay.
That were written in.
Okay, very good. And either, um, Orion or Jeff, can you tell me if the public online has questions this evening? How might they submit those questions?
They go to vimeo.com/rockportmaine.
Okay.
Not to YouTube, YouTube's not up tonight.
Okay, so they should go to vimeo.com/rockport/rockportmaine?
Yeah.
Okay, and they could submit comments through there? Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, so, uh, first on the agenda this evening is approval of minutes. There are no minutes available to be approved this evening. So, um, we'll move on to item two, which is consideration of proposed amendments to the land use ordinance in regards to the nine oh six and nine oh seven zone districts. This pro- proposal is to consolidate both the nine oh six zone districts into one nine oh six zone district, and to consolidate all three nine oh seven zone districts into one nine oh seven zone district. And so, uh, let's see, I might just ask then, uh, are we going to have the square footage then still on the map? Or it'll just be incorporated in the, in the ordinance itself?
Yeah, it'll be in the dimension table.
Okay, and that's the only place, we don't have to look at the map anymore for that.
Correct.
That's great. Okay, any discussion on that item? Tom?
Yeah, well, it looks to me like the original bifurcation or trifurcation of these zone districts was, one of the major differences was the square, the maximum square footage allowed, right? And so we are summarily joining these together and allowing the maximum square footage in all of them. So what was, what was the original intent of restricting the zoning, the, the square footage in s- in some parts of the zones?
I've heard many different scenarios, I haven't found anything in writing as to why there's so many different zones, because the use is the same. And the weird bit about it is, through the definition and the allowance of a connector, you can inevitably get around that minimum. So if you're in a four thousand square foot, but you have the capability of going to ten thousand, you can do that through.
I'm sorry, I ca- I can't hear you.
Uh, through the way of a connector, you can make a ten thousand square foot building in a four thousand square foot current zoning, so.
Yeah.
So, so those square foot, square footage numbers on there, of course, refer to just one building. You could put multiple buildings on that are that maximum number of square footage. It wasn't for the property. The property would be governed by the total lot coverage that's in the table. And that could, that confused me initially, that it's not just for the entire property, it's for a single building.
Okay.
So you have multiple buildings of, you know, ten thousand.
And we have square lot, well, we have square foot coverage based on the size of the lot.
Percentage coverage, yeah.
Right.
That's correct, that would limit it. That satisfy your question, your concern, or you still want to pursue?
You know, it just, it seems to me we're, you're going up in, uh, what, two thousand foot in- increments?
Mm-hmm.
Generally, six to eight, eight to ten.
You know, I'm.
Four to six.
I, I think the intent was to kind of create this flow to density, but if that was the intent, I mean, if we look at, here, we've got a ten thousand, then something that's a little bit less, something a little bit less, something a little bit less, and then more again, kind of more, and then less again, so like, it's like a wave. If that was really the intent, to have this transition down. So I, it's confusing, at any rate, and our zoning map is confusing.
Yeah.
So.
Why, why did we think this is such a problem?
Right now, it's mainly the determination of the zone district. So if you're in, uh, nine oh six, one of the two nine oh sixes, but you're not right next to each other, or one of the nine oh sevens, the zoning map is really going to be the writing rule as to what zone you're in. So if the planning board doesn't quite get that hu- that hue of a color correct, you might approve something that shouldn't have been approved, or vice versa, the code officer. So by cleaning this up.
Would it be easier to just change the colors?
Well, maybe. But, at any rate, we have an ordinance that says, "Refer to the zoning map," and a zoning map that has, has this varying item. And the uses aren't any different from one to the other. And there's ordinance language that circumvents this very thing, which is the connector.
Yeah, we've been on that road.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's, it's, it's interesting. So by no means is this saying, "We're going to go beyond that maximum that's already established." It's just, that's what it is.
It would seem that practically speaking, one of the things that might be much more self-limiting is just looking at the zoning map and the size of the properties of the individual tracks. Um, that, that's probably going to limit what can be developed on each of those properties, just because of lot coverage.
Yes.
Well, certainly along Route One.
Mm-hmm.
Commercial Street.
Yeah, and that's where I think Paul of the mixed use is, is along those two byways, ninety and Route One.
That's correct.
And I mean, you could pick something smaller than the maximum, but then you may be running into problems with some of the existing buildings there, that were built under the, the current ordinance.
Smaller than the maximum.
If you want small, if, there, there's different levels that were in there of square footage. And I think what Orion's done is you picked the maximum value, didn't you?
That's correct, yes.
Well, I, I wasn't suggesting to change, you know, for the, for the.
Right, I know that.
Okay.
I, I just say.
No, I was suggesting that.
Just leave it.
Just leave it the way it is. Change the colors on the map so you can figure it out, rather than make them all.
And I see that, but it, it's, it's still, we have these varying different levels that you can still circumvent. So why, why have it?
Others' concerns?
Is, is there actually a list that we could figure out of pros and cons to changing this?
The pro, the pros really are just clarity. The pros are clarity. And it, it helps with, uh, I mean, a variety of items. If someone's calling to figure out what zone district they're in, and they don't quite understand why we have so many different zone districts with the same use allotment in it.
Uh-huh.
I mean, it, it just clears it up from a, from an informational standpoint, from the public.
Is anybody, um, anybody who's currently in any of those zones, areas, going to be materially affected or damaged by this change?
Um, in my opinion, no, they won't be affected negatively, because there's already that language that allows them to circumvent that maximum, if we want to put a quotation in it, because.
If I can, I was, I was delinquent in doing this, but let me open it up for public comments, maybe.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I, I should have done that. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come in? Could you please step up to the table here at the microphone, so everyone can hear you? Thank you. And please introduce yourself and your, uh, where you live.
I'm, uh, my name is Eric Lautzen, I, uh, I don't live in Rockport, I live in Rockland. But don't hold that against me, uh, but I have Danica candles.
You can sit down.
Okay.
Sure, okay.
I have Danica candles out on Route ninety.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, unbeknownst to me, well, I, I'll start by saying that, uh, I was approved by the Planning Board back in ninety-one as light industrial, that's what it was called in those days. And, um, in ninety-six, I, then that basic building was about, uh, fifty-five hundred square feet, or fifty, uh, fifty-seven, fifty, actually. And then in ninety-six, I, uh, put a thousand square foot addition on to it. So we are in, uh, and unbeknownst to me, things changed over these years, I didn't realize it. And, uh, I talked to Orion on Monday, he called me, which I, I appreciate it. Suddenly, I'm, I'm apparently over, over the, uh, the limit. The limit is six thousand square feet in that area, I'm in that, uh, nine zero six, uh, area, which, uh, limits you to six thousand square feet, I'm already at sixty-seven, fifty. I, uh, I tried to have a, uh, I, I built a nice building, I think. Uh, we do, we did a lot of landscaping, and we continue to do landscaping there. My only big complaint is that it's a muddy mess this time of year, and I can't really afford to pave the whole place. But, um, uh, so in any case, uh, Orion, uh, brought up the fact that, uh, nine zero seven, which is pretty close down the road from me, um, somewhere around, I, I think MRC maybe.
Yeah, yeah, so if you look at my map, the, where my mouse is hovering, that's, that's his personal.
I'm not seeing it, hang on. Oh, okay.
There.
Gotcha.
So, um, it allows for a ten thousand square feet. It's not really, uh, very convenient for, uh, we make, if you don't know already, we make mostly hand-dip candles, and, uh, and we have a good flow. The, the building was built by Bruce Lauka when he lived in Rockport. And, um, it's, uh, it's been very, um, I have no complaints about, um, you know, the way it's worked out for us. We, uh, business is, uh, in these times, is actually booming, so. We're contemplating putting an addition on, but an addition that would work for us, and that would be probably a small addition on the backside of the building, um, to, uh, to move, uh, a big. It's all, all the vats we have are, uh, hot water jacketed, and so we have a big boiler, and we just had to go to a bigger boiler just, uh, a couple of years ago, and we need, perfectly would be to move it into this, uh, this addition. Also, we have lots of storage needs, as probably anybody who has a light manufacturer realizes that, uh, that takes up a good half of what, uh, space you have. So, um, I guess I'm asking that you consider, uh, putting us in nine zero seven. I also was told, uh, I know Richard Remsen pretty, pretty well. And Richard usually keeps me, us updated, and, uh, he had said that we would be in the, that traditional village overlay zone. And there, I did find, because industrial is no longer even listed in your, uh, in your chart.
There, there is a small industrial area on the map, though. There's a small zone.
Yeah, industrial, uh, and tradesman shops are both, uh, listed, but.
Oh.
Not light in, industry, you did have a, a category.
I see.
But I found one, in, uh, the traditional, uh, village zone, there's, uh, there's still reference to light industrial. So, um, well, I guess I'm, I'm concerned, and, and in nine oh six, industrial is, uh, obviously it was okay when I was, when I built my, even built my addition in nineteen ninety-six.
Right.
It's not listed as a, as a use any longer in that area.
Okay, so if we flatten this, would that help this gentleman's problem then?
It won't, it won't, you're, you're, so his building was approved under, when, when there wasn't a nine oh six, it was just all nine oh seven, the nine oh sixes were nine oh sevens, and that had the industrial and light industrial like he was talking about. So his particular use is already grandfathered in.
Sure.
The addition on to it, like I was talking with the connector aspect of it. So right now, currently, you could still extend with the connector, but I did mention in the phone call that if you were interested in a zoning change, we could probably get you on the November ballot to potentially do that.
That would be wonderful.
Yes.
Yeah, it would solve that problem with, uh, putting an addition on to the existing building.
Yes.
You won't even see it, it'll be on the backside of the building.
Right.
And, uh, as I explained to you, we did trade with, uh, Richard Remsen and, uh, Richard Arno, some of my land, uh, so that they could have, uh, a, uh, new entrance for Park Street.
Right.
The DOT had required that at the time, I don't know if it's still the case. And, uh, so I got a little more depth now on my land, I traded it for some property behind us, so. And, and then, uh, also the fact that it would still be industrial, uh, would be an allowed use in that, uh, nobody wants to be non-conforming, so.
Right, right.
Be an allowed use in that zone, so.
Yeah.
So, okay, so, thank you for having your business in Rockport, we appreciate that.
I wouldn't mind living there, but, you know.
We, we certainly don't want to chase you out.
Getting a little rich.
It's not our intent. Um, it's, it sounds like, in your case, though, some of these things were grandfathered in, just because the ordinance changed over time.
Yeah, I didn't realize that that changed.
Right, right, and it doesn't sound like what we're looking at this evening of flattening these would have an impact directly on you. But we need to figure out how we could accommodate, um, uh, his, his requirements.
No, we should.
And I'm sure he could work that through with you.
Yes.
Whether there's a zoning change, or whatever you.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate your.
Okay, well, thank you for coming. Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, I'm, uh, Chairman of the Rockland Planning Board, by the way. Been on it for thirty-seven years.
Wow.
I think it, uh, they'd like to get rid of me now. I've done my time.
Okay, thanks, thanks for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, yes?
Hi, my name is Sam Clark, I live in Rockport. I am also the Chief Operating Officer at Rockport Marine. The reason I am here tonight is the, uh, mailer that came out with this to the businesses that were being affected. And the proposed change, just in the enlarged area of downtown, had the downtown core amendment zone removed.
Hold on.
It wasn't the case inside where, like in the full-size map. But if you look and draw to the left side of that, where the, the blow-up of the downtown section is.
Did that not come over? Oh, I see your point, I mean, it's a draft, but you can see it right here.
And I just, like, I'm sure that that was, I didn't know if the.
Oh, good catch.
Miscommunication was, hey, we didn't add the part about that section to the footage? Or if the, the picture was a misrepresentation, I just wanted to get that clarified.
It just didn't get carried over when the ARC GIS system.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm behind.
So let me, let me zoom in real quick.
Yep.
So it just miscolored?
Yeah, so you see this stripe, this red stripe?
Yes, yes.
That's the nine thirteen downtown core, right here.
Yes.
And then what he's saying in the zoomed-in portion.
It's not represented the same way.
It's not represented there, which is, that, that's just an error on my end.
Okay.
And that's fine, just wanted to make sure that there wasn't also a plan to remove that as part of this, and.
Okay, so if that remains the same, you don't have any issue?
I don't have a piece in the rest of this. We do have affected, um, pieces that, that are, which is how we got that piece in the first piece, but flattening these do not represent any kind of hardship for us in those.
And you're saying that was just a editorial?
It's just editorial, so what's on the screen right now, that's on the existing zone map, that will be the same on the new zoning map?
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Absolutely, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Good catch.
Any other comments regarding this? Okay, with that, we'll close the public comment on this and continue deliberation. So where we're at here is, um, Tom was just concerned about whether or not there was a need to consolidate these districts, um, not having any, any benefit of history, or how we got to where we are today.
In my brief study of the comprehensive plan, I couldn't find any reference to the reason why the nine oh six and nine oh seven zones were broken into separate, um, uh, maximum building footprints either. I don't know if anyone else could find that. I couldn't see the spirit of it, or the, the, the letter of those sizes being particular.
Yeah, I, I could speak to the fact that I am confused, I've been confused by the colors, just the selection of colors, in trying to differentiate, when we do have applications that come before us, exactly which zone they are in. And if they were numbered differently and not made, um, variations of the same zone, that would be helpful. If they were combined, if they were separate, I, I guess, I don't have a strong opinion about that. But there was confusion trying to read the map the way it was. John, Jeff, anything else to that?
I think, I think everybody's already raised the questions I would have about it. I'm all for a simpler, cleaner line through the ordinances myself, so if this helps do that. You know, I don't, I don't see any downside here.
Right, my only concern was it, it ran afoul of some, um, plan which was attempting to step down the scale of developments between Route seventeen and Route one, but I couldn't find any evidence that was the intent.
It's hard to see a pattern either, in the way it's done.
Short of finding somebody who actually was in that conversation at the time, I don't know how we would, would know. That wasn't just because he's the new guy, is it?
Okay, um, so let's, let's put it to a vote, and what I'd like to do just briefly here for the Board, and the, given the fact that we've got some new members over the past year here, is just review the process that we go through when we look at ordinance amendments. So ordinance amendments can be proposed by, um, the ORC Ordinance Review Committee, they could be proposed by the Planning Board, um, they could be proposed by, um, other committees. I think even citizens of the community could come in and ask for changes of zoning changes and things like that. So those zoning changes, the ones that impact the Planning Board, mainly the land use ordinance, come before us. And what this Board does is we vote to either recommend it or not recommend it to the voters. And I'll go through the rest of the process now. So after it leaves the Planning Board with our recommendation, and that recommendation should be based on our knowledge of the land use ordinance document, uh, of our experience in looking at, uh, some site plans as to what we think the best thing from a planning perspective would be with regard to these changes. So after we make a, a recommendation to the voters to approve or disapprove it, uh, the changes then go to the Select Board. The Select Board also reviews those same ordinance changes, and they then, uh, vote as a Select Board as to whether or not they would include those changes on the, uh, the next voter's ballot. And when that ballot comes out, and I'm sure everyone here that's, uh, voted has seen it on the ballot, where that, um, warrant issue is presented, there will usually be a little line in there that'll say, um, Select Board, uh, recommended, approve, disapprove, and, with the tallies, and then Planning Board, uh, recommended, approve, disapprove, with the tallies for the Planning Board. Uh, and then the voters are the ones that actually vote on the proposed changes, and either approve them or disapprove them. So just to be clear, we don't have the authority, and we're not voting tonight to approve them or disapprove them. All we're doing is voting on a recommendation. And that, uh, recommendation for approval or disapproval will just appear on the ballot. So that's, that's what it is we're doing. So with that, on the first item here, um, I would like to, uh, put this to a approval/disapproval vote on the Planning Board, and, um, uh, if there's no further discussion, we'll move forward with that. Okay, so, um, all those that would recommend approval of this ordinance change to consolidate the nine oh six and nine oh seven districts.
So to be clear, we're voting to consolidate the nine oh six districts into one nine oh six, and the nine oh seven districts into one nine oh seven.
That's correct.
Not nine oh six and seventeen.
No, 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 I'm sorry, exactly the way it was stated, that we'd review, yes.
Correct, okay.
Okay, approve? Okay, so we've got.
I was just gonna abstain.
Okay.
Only because.
Okay.
Getting my feet wet.
Okay, that's fine.
Is that okay?
That's fine, okay, so we've got, uh, five approve, uh, no disapprove, and one abstain. Okay, very good. So let's move on to the next agenda item. And the next agenda item is consideration of a proposed amendment to the land use zoning map in regards to the changing the zoning on a parcel of land located at thirty-three Gurnee Street, Rockport, Maine, and known as Map zero zero seven, Lot zero eight seven. This proposal is to change the current zoning from nine oh four district residential to the nine oh two district, uh, Village District. Okay, um, is Peter, by chance, here this evening? Yes, you are. If you'd like to step up and say a few words, that'd be fine.
And just, just for the record, uh, same issue on this map as the last map. I didn't carry through on the zoom in of the nine thirteen downtown core, that'll be fixed.
Okay, so the same issue on nine thirteen?
Same issue.
Okay, thank you. Peter?
Thank you, uh, yes, uh, my name is Peter Alsop. We have a farm called Full Moon Farm on Gurnee Street in Rockport. I can, I, I submitted a letter to the, to the Planning Board about the nature of our request. I can sort of paraphrase that for you, if that'd be helpful. So we are an organic vegetable farm, family-run vegetable farm on Gurnee Street. We are, um, going into our second growing season, it'll be our third year of running the farm business, and we're seeking a recommendation from the Planning Board to the Select Board for this zoning map change to be on the ballot in June. So our property is in the nine oh four, we have but the nine oh two, and we have a thirty-year agricultural lease on our neighbor's property in the nine oh two. The reason we're seeking the change is we would like to be able to use the historic barn on our property as the site for a farm stand, um, so that we can sell our produce directly to our neighbors and the wider Rockport community. The nine oh two district, um, as you know, permits retail, the nine oh four does not. So that zoning map change would allow us to, to have this farm stand to sell our own produce, and also to bring in other, um, produce from other local farms to, to sell at the farm stand as well. In, in the letter that I submitted to you, I pointed out some passages in the comprehensive plan that support this request. I think most, perhaps most relevant, is the passage addressing Rockville itself, in which the comprehensive plan actually recommends that, uh, on Gurnee Street from the Village District to Vinyl Street, which is the street above us, that that be, um, folded into the Village District in response to the, um, development patterns in the Village. And then beyond that, as I'm sure you're well aware, there's numerous passages in the comprehensive plan sort of stating full-throated support from the Rockport community for farms, small farms, farming enterprises, and, uh, farm stands. So it's our mission and our goal to grow food for our community. This zoning, um, map change would allow us to bring customers to the farm and to do that right there. So if you have any questions.
You said you are abutting the, the zone?
We have but the nine oh two along the eastern length of our property.
Orion, yeah, could you vote, or, yeah, just?
This, this parcel here, this is the proposed, this is the proposed zone. This parcel here, this is the proposed, this is the proposed zoning map change, so this is that light colored blue currently today. So he abuts all of this.
Certainly makes the border simpler.
It definitely does, because this, you can see this little strip right here, that was in the 902.
No, oh, I'm just a little confused. You've got that colored right now in the Village District, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's the modified map?
This is the modified map.
Gotcha.
Do you want me to pull up the?
No, that's fine. That's fine. You talk, you spoke, Peter, of having an agricultural lease on an adjacent property?
Yes.
Which one would that be?
It would be the, how best to describe it? Right, that's it right there.
That one there, okay.
Yep, we have essentially the whole of that property, with the exception of a half-acre spot where there's a small cottage.
Okay. Now, this map is modified, but that piece of property is in the Village District today, is that correct? Okay, and the reason that you wouldn't use that piece of property for your sales is because you have this barn, existing building on the property where you are?
For one thing, yes. I think to use that for a farm stand, we'd also have to seek permission from the landowner to build a structure for that purpose on that property.
Because you don't own it.
But we also have the existing barn on our property, which is already there and would be better suited for our purposes.
Okay.
Joe, question? Where would public traffic come from? Would they come off the old road or Gurnee Street?
They'd come off of Gurnee Street. We have a farm road entrance onto the farm, and we would...
Do you have advertising and anything there?
At the moment, we have nothing because we don't, in the current zoning map that we're in, we're not enabled to bring customers there. Once, if this were approved, we would go through the appropriate steps with the Planning Board for signage and parking and the rest of it.
That little piece that goes over to?
Over the brook to?
Old Rockland?
Yep.
Is that an easement or is that part of the property?
That's, I don't exactly know the history, but it does belong to our property. It's 30 feet wide. It crosses a, it crosses the brook there, and so it does come out onto the 902. Orion had asked the question at one point, well, could that be a site for a farm stand? I think the answer is no on a lot of levels. Parking, electrical, bringing the produce all the way around and back. It's not a very functional space for that. I'm not sure why it ever became part of our, I mean, some landowner in the past must have...
Do you use it now?
We don't, no.
Okay, so the access to the property for the public would be off Gurnee Street?
Correct. There would be drive-in, a drive-in entrance there.
Jan, any questions?
No, I don't. I just, I'm glad to have another farm in Rockport.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
No question. John?
No.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public here have any comments on this case before? Okay, I guess I'll just make a few comments. I look at this, and many of the things that Peter said about encouraging Rockville, all of the villages in Rockport to grow as growth areas, that isn't in the comprehensive plan. And it looks like what we're doing here is, it is adjacent, of course, to the current village zoning. It's actually a part of the frontage along the street. On the opposite side, already is village frontage. So this seems like a minor change to me, to have this piece of property changed to the village zone to be able to accommodate this. I think it would be a good thing. It would help grow that village atmosphere that it is that we're trying to attain in all the villages in Rockport. So I think it would be a good thing. Other comments?
I think to, similar to the last item on our agenda, we don't know exactly what conversations were had around the drafting of which properties should be included and which shouldn't. But returning to the comprehensive plan, as Peter pointed out, I mean, it's pretty clear that it states that it recommends the properties between Gurnee Street and Old Rockland, on Gurnee Street from Old Rockland Street to Vinyl Street to be part of this core village area, and yet they're not. I mean, I would wonder why three of these properties shown on the map that reflect that part of Gurnee Street aren't all considered to be part of that zone, and why we're limiting to this one. I understand it's because the petitioner wants that one. But it would seem the spirit of the comprehensive plan is that it would extend all the way to Vinyl.
And I think if we did that, we need to at least solicit those sign orders.
Agreed, agreed. Yeah, I don't, I don't know either. Maybe there's a difference in timing between the comprehensive plan and when the zoning map, I have no idea. Good point though, Jeff. John, anything?
No. I agree particularly with what Jan said. I think it's farmland, it's business, it's all good.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, we'll put this to a vote. And again, what we're voting for here is recommendation, this is not even approval/disapproval. This is, would be a recommendation to the Select Board, since they're the only ones to have the authority to change the zoning. Recommendation to the Select Board to move the referenced plot here, Map 007 Lot 087, from the 904 District into the 902 Village District is what we would recommend. So those in favor of recommending to the Select Board that we make this change to the Select Board? All right, we've got six, and those opposed, okay.
Actually, I have one question. Does this mean that then it will go up for a vote with the town?
Yes.
Or? Is there a simpler way of, like practically speaking, no one would probably?
It's the, it's the difference between being a town and being a city.
Yeah.
We don't, Select Board doesn't get to pass laws here, and consequently neither do any of the subcommittees get to pass changes like that at all. Everything goes before the voters.
Okay, so Orion, do we need to draft a letter, or will you take care of that?
I'll take care of that.
That recommendation, okay. Okay, so thank you, Peter. Good luck to you. Thanks for doing it in Rockport. Next item on the agenda, item number four, consideration of proposed amendments to the solar farm ordinance to provide clarity and protective measures for the environment. This ordinance is also proposed to be amended into the land use ordinance into Section 800. We already have some other items there, such as wireless communications is in there, wind power farms are in there also. So it seems to fit. So before the board gets started on deliberation, are there any public comments on the solar ordinance? No one in the room? Is someone, Jeff, monitoring Vimeo? You are, and you see no comments there?
No, no, it is, it is.
Okay. No viewers on Vimeo at all?
On Vimeo.
Okay. Okay, so hearing no comments, we'll close the public comment section, and we'll start board deliberation. And let's, you've got the, okay, you've got the document pulled up, and that's the final marked up one, okay. So let me just make a couple of comments on this. I incorporated the comments from our previous meeting. And when I did this, as I stated, when I posted this document, I incorporated, I tried as best I could to incorporate those comments as they were stated. The one thing I did beyond that is that in the case of security, it was included in several, several different sections redundantly, sometimes the same sentence. So what I did was I just combined those things together. The other item I'm going to make note of here is that I excluded the paragraph that attempted to look at the, the density of solar farms established. And that was to try to look at maybe a distance between properties that are used for solar energy and things like that. Looking at the properties out there, practically speaking, there aren't a lot of large pieces of land out in that area. It's near the utility grid, and I don't think it's going to be a problem. I believe it's going to self-limit. I looked at other ordinances. I didn't see any other ordinances and towns around the area that attempted to, to put that kind of a restriction on, so I just eliminated that, that paragraph. The other thing I did, again, as I mentioned with the notes when this was posted, is that I did look at the two solar farms that were approved previously in the size of the properties on those solar farms, both size in term of, in terms of acres and also in terms of megawatts of energy produced. And what I did do was I left in there the paragraph that talked about the size of individual solar farms. And again, that's just in consideration of the fact, I was just up at Beach Hill yesterday, whether or not the community would want all of the surrounding hills to be surrounded with solar farms, or if we'd want to limit those in size. So for that reason, I left that paragraph in that we did discuss last time. I did change the number of acres to be 50 acres, which was consistent with the farms that currently are up there. I'll just make one more side note while I'm on that. When I was up at Beach Hill yesterday, I also noticed that the, the solar company actually posted a little poster up on the window of the Beechnut Hut up on top of the hill, that, just kind of an educational poster that talks about the fact that the solar farm you could see from the top of Beach Hill is actually used concurrently for blueberry farming, which is a unique concept, one of the first in the state. So that's good. I commend them for putting that poster up there. Okay, so those are the things I wanted to note, just because they were beyond the changes that I incorporated. So with that now, I'll open it up, and I suggest we go through for discussion here, page by page on the ordinance we're looking at on the screen, and those that put comments in, I'll let you talk about what you've got there. So why don't we go through the first page, page one first?
Just note, Joe, that that, that solar farm is actually part of a, I think, University of Maine research project that the university is doing.
It was done in cooperation with them. It was actually developed by a private entity down in the Boston area, but they consulted and they worked very closely with them, University of Maine.
To, to study how well the ground below solar panels can be used.
That's correct. Okay. Let's see. So Jan, your comments there are just logical changes, editorial changes. It's fine. I don't think we need to go through those one by one. Let's just talk about substantiative changes. Next one down. Senate worship leasing. Documents officially shall be submitted. So that looks like a substantiative change to, it's B. Oh, those are numbers.
I think, I think these are, I think these are old.
Oh, those are all the old comments that are in there. Okay, that's where they are. Is there a way to see newer ones only?
Yeah, let me...
I added a couple today.
February.
Oh, yeah, we can look at the date and time there. That's a good point. February.
Then-year dollars. You just passed it.
Yeah, so...
I've never seen a phrase I hated more.
Okay, that's, that's a phrase that I've heard, then-year dollars.
Yeah, I don't know if it's, if it's a standard, but I don't know why we can't say something like average inflation-adjusted dollars.
Whatever way is a better way to state it is fine with me. I just wanted it to cover the fact that when decommissioning costs are estimated, that they not be estimated in today's dollars, but rather be estimated in what it'll really cost 30 years from now.
Yes.
So whatever way is best to capture that. So you suggested...
I just think average inflation adjusted better than that, but I'm not, I'm not a financial guy. If there's such a thing as then-year dollars. I'm not a budget guy. And I objected to jingo there also.
Any other ideas on that?
Just thinking about it, I don't know how you would, how would you calculate it even?
There are standard methods for doing that.
The financial accountants take care of it, yeah. I've done that before in business, yeah.
And what do they call it?
You assume a rate of inflation of, you know, average of, you know, 3% or 4% a year, whatever.
Okay. Okay. And that would be something that would be negotiated with the town attorney at the time the surety bond was posted, so. So you want to say what, a few, words again, future adjusted?
Yeah, adjusted, the average, average inflation adjusted. So you take, assume what the average inflation per year is, and then adjust the numbers by that.
Okay, so we're capturing it right now.
Which adjusted. Inflation dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's, might be in one more place yet too, I think.
It is.
It was. And so we'll do the same thing.
I think it should be inflation adjusted rather than adjusted inflation.
Inflation adjusted. I'm fine with that, no problem.
That's the proper way to say it, yes, according to what I just Googled.
It's the average inflation adjusted dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
Average inflation adjusted. It's at 815.11 also.
Okay, so I'm gonna delete that one.
That's an old one.
That's an old one.
Hold. Hold.
Okay. Done.
Jeff, we just lost our screen. There we go. That one looks like that comment was current.
Yeah, I'm just waiting, I'm waiting for him. Okay.
Okay, so it looks like you, you modified it already, is that right? It looks like one inclusive there.
Yeah, where it says inclusive of Butler, of buffers and setbacks. It says it twice.
I got it, I see, I see. Got it, got it. I would take the first inclusive of setback and buffers out. It seems like it fits better at the end. Inclusive of buffers and setbacks all the way through.
Take the other?
Of buffers and setbacks.
Take the whole thing, I see what you're saying?
Yeah, all the way through.
I thought you were trying to say get the inclusive out.
Uh, you can take, yeah, comment space out too, yeah. That's good. Okay, next comment?
Okay.
I think you did that, that's fine.
I did this one.
Yep.
Do I need to explain it, or?
No, that's fine. Let's see, the educational signage around from Elias permitted and encouraged. Okay. I thought you had something in there previously about that could be taken down or something?
That it could be taken down.
Yeah, after construction was complete.
Yeah, there's something in that.
Is that somewhere else?
The, the sign in advertising, Chapter 1100, has everything that we concern ourselves with signs, so if we just revert to that, then it covers everything.
Okay, that's fine.
Fewer words, the better.
Yep. Okay.
Now, whatever, I'll, I'll accept that later.
That's new. So you... So you took that out. Why did you take that out?
So since we're incorporating that into the land use ordinance itself, in the general provision section of the land use ordinance, you have the ability to waive any section already.
Okay.
So.
All right. And I think where that came from is that was actually taken from a surrounding town ordinance, those words. Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
What does that?
Okay. Leadership management. Oh, and/or code enforcement officer. Like, this, this requires Planning Board approval regardless.
Why, why is that?
It's a solar farm. It would exceed anything.
Okay, so the Planning Board, but the code enforcement officer certainly can approve timber cutting?
Can approve timber cutting, yes.
Not related to a solar farm?
I see what you're saying. So if they come in for a permit to remove, I guess, here's the deal. If they come in for a permit to remove the trees and then come in for a solar farm, I mean, how's the code officer going to know?
Well, yeah, but if he approves the timber cutting for valid reasons, that would be fine. No matter what they're going to do with it.
Discouraging, is discouraging, subject to the approval.
Yeah, we're just, we just don't want people to go down and level all the trees to build solar farms, that's all. It's just discouraged. It's not prohibited.
I guess here's, if they go to the code officer first and they get the approval to do it, and then they come to you to get their approval for the plan, then if you have an issue with it, who's right? then if you have an issue with it, who's right, who's wrong?
You're right.
So I'd rather the planning board approve.
I'm fine with that.
So are we saying it's discouraged, or are we saying it's subject to approval? Or do we even need discouraged in there? Do we just say subject of approval?
Well, we're saying both. We're saying discouraged and subject to approval. So we're not, we're not saying it's...
We're telling them that we're...
We're not saying it's prohibited.
Yeah.
Okay.
There may be cases where it could be valid.
Okay.
Okay, next one.
This is an old one. Okay, that's right.
Oh, that's the comment, yeah.
So this has to do with screening security maintenance and regular regulatory compliance.
Additionally, one or more signs shall be fixed to the fence identifying the owner of the facility and emergency contact information. Why are those only for the duration of the construction? Why wouldn't we leave those them?
Yeah, so under the other one, if I come back up here... This is already covering it. The owner and operator shall install a sign that identifies the name and owner of the operator at a 24-hour emergency contact phone number of the operator. So that's already covered in the signage?
Yeah, the only difference is those are on the fence specifically, identifies being on the fence. Additionally, one or more signs should be fixed to the fence.
So you think the sign at the town roadway should include that information as well?
I think that would be a reasonable idea, and I think most of our solar farms have done that in the past.
Okay.
Just mark those. So I would take out those red.
Okay, I don't know. I think that's, I think that's going a bit far. I think a solar farm can exist on its own without advertising itself on the roadway.
Well, it's not advertising though. What do you mean?
No, by having identifying information on a sign, both at the entrance to the farm and at the roadway, where it may be miles away from, not in the case of a Rockport parcel, but it could be a long distance away from the actual solar farm. You really need to identify it at the street.
I think, I think for safety reasons, it would be important, I think.
Okay.
I mean, they may have a gate there at the roadway, and maybe the fire department would have to call and get the gate unlocked.
Yeah, if it were a gate, I would say, yeah, that's, that's the location where the other sign takes place, is at the gate. But then we're talking about two signs, one that's further in, closer to the solar array, and one that's at the road.
Well, the one closer to the solar array, nobody would see probably, except for the service guy that goes up there.
Right.
And all I'm thinking with the ones that would be posted on the fence is that if somebody were wandering through there, wasn't supposed to be there, or something happened, and they were up there, they wouldn't have to run all the way down to the road. They could contact somebody.
Yeah, I can see that.
So that was, that was why. Okay with that?
Yeah.
What's with the numbering? Is that just temporary because of additions or?
Which number? The individual item numbers or the paragraph number?
Scroll up a little bit. You've got one, one.
Oh.
And then one.
No, okay, so that's just, yeah.
That can be fixed.
So we'll clean that up in the final. I'm gonna guess there's other things that need to be cleaned up to put it into the document also. Needs headers and footers and... As long as there's no substantiative changes, that's, that's fine. Okay, that's same, yeah, same one. Different words there, and future value. Didn't like those either. Okay. Next. Old.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, any comments beyond this from the board?
Yeah. I didn't write down where it is, but somewhere in here, when it talks about fencing off the solar farm, it says no chain link fence, and I'm wondering what it is you think they're gonna put up? If they don't put up a chain link fence.
I think what they put around the blueberry farm was like, I want to say stockade fence. It's like wooden posts with like stockade, not chain link fencing, but much...
Yeah, but around a 50-acre parcel.
Well, wasn't, the piece of land was 50 acres, the solar panels were not 50 acres.
And that's what the fencing in here refers to, is the solar panels as opposed to the property?
Yes, yeah, just around the solar panels.
Oh, I misunderstood. Okay, fine. I just misunderstood.
Yeah. Just for safety reasons, they do that.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, Jan?
No, not here, no. I thought it was good.
To that point, if the solar farm were surrounded by forest, would that have the same importance? What, that it'd be a fence with natural elements that blends in with the surroundings? So, I mean, if it's surrounded by a forest, then, you know, it's got trees, you could basically put the fence in the forest, and it's surrounded by natural elements. Does it matter what the fence is made of?
If you owned a solar farm, if you invested in a five-megawatt solar farm, would you think you'd put a chain fence around it to keep people from coming in and smashing stuff?
Yeah, and it doesn't say here that, actually, there's two Shelby's there too. One should be eliminated. It doesn't say here that chain link fences are prohibited.
Okay.
It says that, as you pointed out, if it fits, and it's not in the middle of a forest, and it stands out, and it's very obvious, we'd favor a natural fence over a chain link fence.
Sorry, I missed the favorite part.
Yeah, it doesn't demand it.
Okay.
And again, my, our experience with the two solar farms we have, they've been very reasonable. They've actually done things before we asked. John, anything?
Nope. Good.
Okay, no further discussion. We'll put it to a vote. And so this one, again, is an ordinance. So this one, we are voting, or we're voting now to either approve, recommending the voters to approve or disapprove this ordinance is what our recommendation is.
Hey, Joe.
Just real quick on that piece about fences, where it says subject to approval, the lots on which they are located shall be protected by a perimeter fence. That means the entire lot, right?
Not necessarily. Protected by a perimeter fence.
Yeah. Yep. Yep. Okay, so for the benefit of those that may not have heard that comment on the microphone, on item one, under, under C, we're talking about, "Subject to the approval of the Rockport Planning Board, the lots on which the LSES are located shall be protected by a perimeter fence." And the question, the comment was that a perimeter fence typically suggests around the perimeter of the total lot, the total piece of property. That's not the intent here. It was intended that it be around the perimeter of the solar panels. So how might we modify the words to clarify that? Around the solar perimeter, fence around the perimeter of the solar panels and related equipment?
Or a fence to isolate the solar panels and the equipment from the general public or something.
Well, the problem is the word lots. Right?
Yep. But we should be clear about what the perimeter is also, if we do eliminate lots. So I would suggest that it's the perimeter around the solar panels and related equipment be fenced.
Yeah.
The perimeter surrounding the solar panels and related equipment be fenced.
Yeah, or you could use the LSES abbreviation, couldn't you? Say the lots on which LSES are located.
Well, not the lot, though.
No, but, okay, sorry. The LSES, because that stands for everything that you just said about the solar equipment and the array, shall be protected.
That'd be fine.
So you repeat that, please?
So replace all, like, the lots on which LSES is... Replace the lots on which with all LSES are protected by a perimeter fence.
It's, I would think obvious that it's on a lot. Like, we don't need to talk about the lot.
So instead of lot, can we say the area on which the LSES are located shall be protected by a perimeter fence?
The area, instead of lots.
Right.
The area of the lot containing the equipment.
Same thing, but the area is shorter, right?
Yes, but maybe not as clear.
I don't like that.
You don't like those words?
I don't like the area. I would say the solar panels and associated equipment should be protected by a perimeter fence, period. Then you don't have any reference to lots or area. It's the panels and the equipment that have to have a perimeter fence.
That's fine. I think it says the same thing in a different way, but if you're more comfortable with that, let's, let's go with that. I'm good with that.
I'm fine.
Did you catch that? All right. So we're taking out, yeah, that.
Let me just, let me go back. We revert everything. All right, so that'll just remain deleted.
You want to repeat it?
Tell me what you wanted to say.
Would you please repeat it?
I would say the solar panels and associated equipment of the LSES shall be protected by a perimeter fence.
Yes.
So right here, and we're gonna get rid of the LSES?
You just start writing the solar panels.
The solar panels and associated equipment.
Shall be protected by a perimeter fence.
I thought you left LSES in there somehow, but... You okay with that?
And then this gets deleted.
Yeah.
That works.
Pretty clear to me.
Yes.
Okay. Tom, you okay with that?
Sure.
Thanks for pointing that out.
We still have a couple seats on the planning board.
I stand here for a reason.
Okay.
Okay. Any other concerns, comments? All right. All those in favor of recommending that this ordinance modification be approved by the voters? All right, so we've got six. Now, all those opposed, or to disapprove it? None. Okay, so we've got six zero zero.
I've lost track because we've been working on this for so many meetings. Is this a brand-new ordinance, Joe?
No. This ordinance existed as a standalone ordinance in a very much reduced fashion. The prior standalone ordinance focused primarily on decommissioning the site. It had very little about doing anything to protect the surrounding landowners or anything else.
Yeah, so I, this is a substantial revision.
It is, it is. It's probably a 50% change to it. Okay.
And this is no longer going to be standalone ordinance? It's gonna be part of the land use?
Yeah, that's another one of those that there's no one left standing that could understand why it was made standalone. I don't know why.
So it's not going to be?
No, it's not going to be. It fits in section 800 because we have other, we have other solar, not solar, but other energy-producing systems in section 800 today. Wind is in there.
To that point, are there many other standalone ordinances?
There's quite a few.
Is there a way we can
Yes.
just have one, one kind of blanket?
Yes, there is.
Thing that says we're gonna roll them all into one?
Yeah, yeah, but I think it'd be easier just the structure of how we have to do things, just one by one. If we do a big blanket thing, I'm worried that would get... Yes, that's my career achievement there.
All right, so keep us on task, because I didn't know we had a...
When do you retire?
Yeah, I know. I'll see if it gets done.
Recently, I didn't know we had a, you know, a policy or ordinance on cannabis shops.
Yeah.
And that was another one that's out there.
You think I'll open them one?
If these meetings keep going, Joe?
Okay, next on the agenda is consideration of proposed amendments to the land use ordinance in regards to implementing the state legislation, LD 2003, and further amendments to allow vacation rentals and short-term rentals. Okay, so let's give you a minute to open that document up so we could get started.
Yeah, I gotta plug my computer in.
Okay. So hopefully everyone on the board had an opportunity to spend a bit of time reviewing LD 2003. On the surface, it seems pretty simple, but it does take some thought to understand what the goals are that they're trying to achieve with LD 2003. The guidance document I found, DECD guidance document that was posted to be a pretty good document, that was produced by the, what, Department of Economic Development or something in the state? And that was kind of a good summary version of that. Okay, so what document do we want to start with here on this one to get grounded?
I think, I think, oh, me, well, why don't we, why don't we look at the language first, so it's in the record at least for the recording? And then I can talk a little bit about this and what's, why we're proposing what we're proposing and not the other.
Okay, and so before we get started with that, let's open it up for public comments. If there is anyone that has any comments or questions about this ordinance provision and modification. Okay, LD 2003. And so this is a state, state legislation that speaks to affordable housing. And where we encounter some action here is that municipalities have to be in compliance with this state legislation. I think the target was July 1 of 2023. So that's why we're looking at making some changes here. Some parts of this legislation are not fully defined. Rulemaking is still ongoing within the legislature. But we're trying to take an active step forward here and at least implement the parts of this that are firm. So if I can, I want to take the liberty just to try to, in my mind here, just organize some thoughts. And that is that, as I see it, there were really, there were three areas that we looked at primarily as impacting our ordinance. And those three areas were parking for ancillary structures, that was one area. I'm just gonna list these by title. The second area was density of housing, and the fact that it permits a greater density of housing. And then the third item was...
Well, I was, I was gonna go a different route than that, but what I was, what I'd proposed and typed up?
Yeah. There are three areas you had.
Yeah, one of them was the short-term rental definition as well.
That wasn't the third area I was thinking of. Hang on, let me pull it up.
So before we get into that document, can I just give like a highlighted view of LD 2003?
Sure, go ahead.
So that one's broken up into three parts. This is where I thought he was going with it, so I said, all right, go for it. The first one is affordable housing development, which increases affordable density, and that's got a lot of restrictions entitled into it. So if you do it, then there's some deed restrictions that you can't sell it for X number of dollars above hand. I don't know quite how that's gonna work in our ordinance, and the rules are not finalized yet, so I don't think we should really rush into making that one implemented. But we should take steps into getting LD 2003 implemented, just to show that we are cooperating, we're making efforts. The other one is the dwelling units. Dwelling units per LD 2003 are allowed to have four dwelling units per lot. And then the third item is additional dwelling units are allowed on a lot.
Ancillary, or accessory.
Accessory dwelling units, sorry. Accessory dwelling units are allowed on a lot, and you cannot... and you cannot change your setback requirements to rule them out. Those are the three areas of LD two thousand and three.
But yet they have to comply with the current setback requirements that are there.
Correct, so we can't change it.
Did you mention parking?
Yeah, and the additional dwelling unit is, it circumvents the parking requirements. Yes.
Yeah, so those are the three. Let's take it, density, accessory units, and parking. Those are the three major areas.
Can I ask a question about the definition of a dwelling unit? Does that include, if someone was to split up their house into, essentially divide it into two apartment-style, would that be two dwelling units or one? Okay.
I'm a little unclear as to how an accessory dwelling unit could be different from a dwelling unit because it's understood that accessory dwelling unit or sort of in-law apartment, it may be tied into a, the primary dwelling unit, or maybe smaller. In some cases, it says smaller, but it could be construed to be a separate dwelling unit depending on how it's arranged. So I'm not really clear as to how we, in the policy, make it clear one is a dwelling unit and one is an accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah, that would, that would be hard. I think that would come through an application process. And I think, I think probably even in November, November ballot, we'll have a revision to what we're doing right now. Just depends on how the applications come in and what they're proposing to do and how, how it actually comes to be, so.
Because materially, they, they could seem very similar.
Oh, yeah.
You could have a building on your property next to a house that you reside in, that you then, you know, have a family member stay in or guests, or it becomes a permanent family member apartment. And then that family member dies and you start renting it out to somebody. And then in that case, it's not an accessory dwelling unit, it's a dwelling unit.
Yes, and I, I see his point on that.
No, it's not the primary, primary.
Yeah, I, first, let me say, I agree in that I think the definitions need to be tightened up here because as I go through the definitions, I got really confused because we talk about accessory buildings, accessory structures, accessory dwelling units. In some cases, we're crossing the references, meaning that one applies to many. So that's all confusing. I think an accessory unit is something outside of the primary residence. An accessory dwelling unit is a dwelling unit outside of the primary residence on a piece of property.
It could also be, it could also be like a, a small building in your backyard.
An accessory building, structure.
Yeah, that could be.
It could be a shed. It could be a tool shed, yeah.
I'm not arguing the difference between accessory building and accessory dwelling unit. The difference between a dwelling unit and an accessory dwelling unit.
Dwelling, dwelling could be part of a house.
Well, it certainly...
Requires, the way that I read it was an accessory dwelling unit is a separate building.
It, it, it can be an accessory dwelling unit inside your house, which is...
But then it, you could have a separate dwelling inside your house, but that's not an accessory dwelling.
I, I, I agree with you.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think anybody here's disagreeing on that. It's, it's how, how it's structured.
Sorry, that dwelling units can be outside your house or inside your house.
Correct.
But an accessory dwelling, and I don't see the distinction between a dwelling unit that's outside your house and an accessory dwelling unit from the definitions.
There, I'm not clear.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. In, in all cases, accessory refers to something outside the house, but in the case of dwelling unit, it could be inside or outside. It, it's not consistent. It's not clear to me.
And yet there are different, there are different rules.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay, go ahead. I, we, I think that's important that we clean that up before we move forward in implementing the rest of this because if you don't understand the definitions, how could you define the requirements?
Well, it, it, it's not the definition of it. It's the structure of LD two thousand and three and how they define it. I mean, we could say something completely different, but then we're out of compliance with LD two thousand and three, and then that's where we could get into a legal lawsuit.
Yeah, but, but the, the references today are very confusing as I read through our ordinance and I read through LD two thousand and three. They don't, they're not matching.
So you're saying accessory use, like our current definitions, accessory use and accessory...
It seems like in our ordinance, the majority of accessory use is something detached from the primary structure on the property.
Yes.
But in LD two thousand and three, they use accessory dwelling unit to be something that's within it. It's, it's just confusing.
It is confusing, and I see your confusion.
So we at least need to speak to that and try to clarify that because if we can't understand it, the public probably can't either.
Well, let's see.
So, so let's not get hung up on that now, though, but I just wanted to flag that. I think it's a problem. I think Jeff's finding the problem there, too. Let's go ahead through what we've got.
Let's do that.
There's a lot more to do yet.
There's a lot. Oops, sorry. So...
Which document is this?
This is amendments to LD, amendments to incorporate LD two thousand and three.
Okay, got it.
Okay, you want, since you prepared this, you want to walk through it?
Sure. Our, so, so the dwelling unit accessory or accessory dwelling unit, I, I structured it that way because it matches with our current definitions of dwelling units, that way they're all confined into one. That is the exact language from LD two thousand and three's proposed rules. There's nothing much to it. I had a few things added on to it afterwards and talked to the ordinance review committee. They, let's see if I remember the exact words. It was, oh, it was conflicting with my understanding of it and their understanding of LD two thousand and three, so it was removed, and we just stuck with the boilerplate that's proposed for an additional dwelling unit.
Okay, so I'm just going to make a note here. We'll come back to it. I don't want to hold things up. But on dwelling unit, the, the state definition defines the minimum, the less than one hundred and ninety square feet. Just a question, do we want to consider maximum on an ancillary unit?
We have the ability with LD two thousand and three to create a maximum.
Right.
I...
And, and so my concern there would be that somebody could build an accessory building on the property that's bigger than the primary property, or the primary structure.
Well, so they could propose it. It would be hard to get approval for it because it's an accessory, and if it's an accessory, then it's an accessory use, and that would have to be a less principal, or it would have to be less than the principal use. So then that would then become the principal because it would be larger.
Hmm, yeah, okay.
And that's how...
Again, let's not get hung up on it here, but I, I think we ought to go back and look at that after we get through this.
That defined? That, that's, that is, where is it? It's in, I think it's in the current definition of accessory, either structure or accessory use itself. I think it's...
Something like it can't take away from the primary use of the property or something, some kind of statement.
Use of which is incidental to that of the main or principal building.
That doesn't define it as being larger or smaller.
Right.
No, I guess it's up to interpretation at that point. So I guess it could be one person, and the, the primary is like a family of ten, and then the one person just wants a larger building.
Or you could have a small modular home and a barn that gets converted.
That's true.
In which case, the barn is bigger than the smaller home.
That's true.
Yeah, and so my thoughts here were that if there was a neighborhood that had primary structures in it and someone built an accessory structure, you just wouldn't want it to be so out of place that it disrupted the character of the neighborhood. That's all. And so I, however, we find a way to express that. I don't know what it is yet. Okay, so again, I just want to make that note. We'll come back to it.
The adding of the definition of transient rental platform, there's language in LD two thousand and three that alludes to this and that we could, they, LD two thousand and three doesn't, it makes the recommendation that a municipality can regulate short-term rentals. I know it was proposed to regulate short-term rentals, or the town proposed to regulate short-term rentals in the past. It didn't go too well. That ordinance got batted down. But we currently don't have anything in our ordinance that allows short-term rentals or vacation rentals. And so by adding this in, then it, in essence, allows them to exist. So the transient rental platform is your Airbnb, your Verbo, everything else of that nature, but it also covers, if you wanted to do this on your own, on your own platform, this covers that terminology. Short-term rentals, it's a very basic boilerplate terminology that doesn't step on anybody's toes, and it is a short-term rental definition.
Ryan, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm having a real tough time hearing you down here.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, me too.
I think, I think Jeff is messing with my microphone, just to mess with it. So did you hear my explanation of the transient rental platform?
Sort of. I, I read it. I know it.
Okay, well, the short-term rental definition, it's boilerplate definition for that. It covers it without stepping on anybody's toes to cause a riff with anybody, but it allows a definition to exist.
So this is a definition of a short-term rental right here?
That is a definition of a short-term rental.
Its living quarters offered for rent through a transient rental platform?
Yes.
My question is, why does it have to be through a transient rental platform, number one? And if, when you say short-term rental, to me, that means it's a time-delineated thing.
Yes.
There's no reference to time.
No, there's not, and if, if, if we get into that, I don't know if we have enough data to back up putting a time period on it right now because we currently don't have an allowed use. I don't have any data to really go on how, how it's used in Rockport. So by putting a time period in it, it could cause a problem. I get what you're saying. Short-term, short is what, what does that define?
I mean, this is, this is what's causing all of the consternation across the country is that you've got people moving in and moving out of places. They rented for a Saturday night and they have a bash and, you know, blow up the whole neighborhood, and then they're gone.
I also don't have...
Not resident, nobody's there.
Right. I, I agree with you. So the current proposal is to get in a definition of it. That's what we're trying to do. I don't, I don't know right now, is what I'm saying. I, I agree that that happens in other areas where it's a big problem. I don't have enough complaints to warrant really going that detailed and putting a regulatory item in effect. I also don't have the staff to enforce it, so that, that's kind of that problem. Go ahead.
If I could, if I could float for a moment. LD two thousand and three seems to me to be organized around the principle of adding affordable housing, increasing the housing stock to the state of Maine and to localities.
Yes.
I do not think of hotels and motels and campgrounds as being housing stock. I don't think of short-term rental either. It does have a reference to short-term rental in two thousand and three. I'm not quite sure why. But if we are talking about organi, about, about an ordinance that will increase, that can increase density of housing so that it meets the state's requirement for affordability, that requirement for affordability for rental is that a person that cannot go for more than one-third of eighty percent of the median range income. The median range income in Knox County, according to the government, is seventy-one thousand four hundred and twelve dollars. Eighty percent of that is fifty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. A third of that divided then by three hundred and sixty-five to find the maximum amount that you can charge for a day is fifty-two dollars and seventeen cents. Are we saying, are we going to enforce? Because I know that people are going to go, okay, I'm putting up a hundred and ninety-square-foot business. I'm going to advertise it. I'm not renting it to a worker or anybody that's going to stay here more than forty-eight hours. I'm putting it on Airbnb. Are we going to enforce that they cannot charge more than fifty-six dollars a day?
No, we, we can't do that.
So what the hell is going on? How can this be part of an affordability problem?
That's something you'd have to take up with the state. So that's why they say you can enforce this regulatory item. I don't have the data to really go after and say, we've got a problem, you know? I, I don't have that. I do think, because there are businesses that need employment. I know of, I have three businesses right now that are buying up properties to convert some, convert them into housing for their workforce. This allows them to do more. If we ignore the short-term rental aspect of it, just the LD two thousand and three and its density allowance, it allows them to do more so that they can get more employment. So I do think that there will be good-hearted people, businesses in particular, that will use it.
And I don't consider that short-term.
Right. That, that's not short-term. I'm adding this definition of short-term rental, the transient rental platform, the vacation rental, and the timeshare, which already exists, it's just in the motel, hotel. I'm adding that so that it's clear, it is defined, and we have it as a use because people already use it. They're already there, so we just need to show it in our ordinance. You're getting at, at a big-picture item, and I agree with you. And at some point, we'll get into the weeds of that in the future.
Is two thousand and three designed for affordable housing, whereas more than half the units have to be available to somebody under seventy-five thousand dollars a year, paying only thirty percent of that?
For their affordable housing development, the first bit into that, yes. They are for that. The dwelling unit and the additional dwelling unit, their hope, I'm assuming, is that people will take advantage of it to increase the density so that there is housing for workforce.
And, and but it does not have to be affordable housing?
No.
Okay.
That's, I was confused about that, too.
Yes.
I share your concern. I, I think that this provides, lowers the threshold in certain areas to provide housing that could potentially be more affordable, but there's not really anything that will police it or, or regulate it to be affordable. And so that's especially difficult, I think, in a seasonal vacation-type atmosphere that that problem exists.
But it seems like it wouldn't even be our jurisdictions to control that because it's not, because these don't apply, the affordability aspect doesn't actually apply to the new accessory dwelling units that you could have.
They want to do that through incentives. It's the bonus prob, it's the bonus.
Yeah, but ignoring that, if you're just an individual who wants to convert your shed, they're not bound by...
If you're building housing and you want to take advantage of the bonus, in other words, increasing the density and so forth, then you've got to make, put into the deed or, or somewhere that you will enforce the resale restrictions or the sale restrictions, the rental restrictions on it in order to take advantage. So they hope, it looks to me like through incentives, they hope to create increases in this, in the stock of affordable housing.
But, but it seems like when I read that statement, it was more directed to something like an apartment complex where it was guaranteed to be affordable. It didn't appear from the way I read that text that it would be enforced for accessory structures.
Well, but you look at their pictures, and they've got all little units close together, a density of, of individual housing units or duplexes or whatever. So I've lost track of what issue we're wrestling with. John, I, if I, but if I understand some things here, the, the intent, the spirit of this is to promote affordable housing. Is that correct?
The intent behind that is well-hearted, yeah. That is the intent.
And that's, that's where they're saying you cannot create any ordinances to get in the way of affordable housings by, by accessory dwelling units, by allowing section of the accessory dwelling units. Is that correct?
No.
I think it's more den, density as opposed to affordability.
For the affordability, like, this is where it really gets confusing on it because they've got the first bit, which everybody in here read, which is about the affordable subdivisions. So an affordable housing unit subdivision, that is totally geared for affordability. Then it gets into dwelling units, and it gets into additional dwelling units. Their intent is to, with this, take advantage of buildings that we have that are large enough to convert those into multiple dwelling units. The intent is to create affordability, but there's nothing in there that says we have to keep it affordable. We, there's nothing in there that backs us up to say we... We, there's nothing in there that backs us up to say we can put an ordinance that says you have to keep it to the affordable housing regulation.
It does state that in the case of a sale, in that that's in the-
That's in the first bit.
The deed, and it's registered, in the case of a sale. But in the case of a rental, it doesn't appear that there are any teeth in it.
That's correct.
But we can put teeth into it, because that's not restricting the affordable-
So, they say we can regulate, how do we regulate? I don't know, and I don't know if we really want to go up against that right now, with that type of fight that we'd have to go for.
But I understand, it seems like you're going to let the dogs loose here, but you're not going to regulate it at all.
I hear you on that. And what I really don't want to happen is that we don't get something implemented into our ordinance, and then LD 2003 rides regardless, and then it's up to interpretation. So, per our ordinance, if someone came to you to apply for something that LD 2003 allows them, yet our ordinance doesn't, you would have to deny them, and then they would sue us, then it'd go through appeal, then it'd go to court, and then it'd come down to who's right, who's wrong. And it'd be a long, lengthy process.
So, do board members feel like the affordability aspect is a foundation of being able to move forward with this? And is that going to be a showstopper, or can we just go ahead and do these things that are proposed here? Jan?
My feeling is that I was just fine with everything that I read until I got to the part that says, oh, and short-term rentals, that counts too. And then I went, no, I don't like this, because nobody's going to build affordable housing for workers. They're going to build a hundred and ninety-square-foot, which is one of those pods that you rent when you're throwing stuff out of your house. They're going to do those and Airbnb them at a hundred and seventy-five dollars a night. That's what's going to happen.
Okay, so that's your concern?
That's my concern.
That's my concern, too.
That wasn't a concern I had until tonight, thanks.
What was that?
That wasn't a concern I had until tonight, until this discussion, but now I share it.
Yet, to me, this is just kicking the door open for it, and if we don't do something to, you know, hit it in a little bit.
To be clear, LD 2003 is kicking the door in.
Right, that's what I'm saying, for us to try to comply with this, that's kicking the door open here in Rockport.
Yes.
It looks like, it looks like it says-
Well, it's not just kicking the door open, it's like kicking the door open and putting an incentive on the other side of the door to come on through.
Yeah, and it looks like the state is saying, you can be looser, but you can't be tighter.
But you could, it says you can be looser, but that's where I go to the affordable part of it. You know, like, we can, it's not saying you can't restrict short-term rental accessory dwelling units. It's saying you can't, my understanding, the spirit of this, is it's saying you can't restrict accessory dwelling units that are designed for an affordable housing.
That's correct, and that would be, I don't, I'm sure the state didn't include it, and I won't make a statement of the state and why they're doing what they're doing, but I could see someone pretty easily making an argument that that would be a taking, you're not letting me take advantage of the market. I could rent this out for a hundred and seventy-five, but you're saying I have to rent it out for fifty?
Yes.
Yeah, that's exactly what I think we-
Personally, that's what I'd like to tell them.
That's what I think the spirit of this law is.
I think the spirit of-
No, go ahead, say what you're going to say.
Yeah, I just think the spirit of the law, or of this, is to increase housing stock, and I think that it applies to maybe a lot of Maine, but has some serious potential negative consequences in some areas. And it, from how I read it, it doesn't necessarily give us carte blanche to then regulate short-term rentals, especially since there's no, I feel like the town voted against-
They voted against particular language, now.
We're not trying to regulate short-term rentals, I don't misunderstand. What I'm trying to do is not give short-term rentals another reason to exist.
Let me try to state that a different way. I admire the goals of what it's trying to do here. I'd like to, forget about short-term rentals, I'd like to assure that affordable housing is made available, and it's maintained that way.
Yeah, saying the same thing.
A little more positive way to say it.
Okay, I'll go with that.
Yeah, I do. I'd like to be able to meet the intent of this legislation. Is there somebody else we could learn with, are we missing something here, of how to maintain this?
Right now, there's a lot of municipalities that are fighting this, and they're trying to get the state to at least kick the requirement at a minimum. It doesn't look promising, and there's a lot of municipalities that are trying to appeal it, but that also doesn't look promising, so.
Can we define housing? Are we allowed to define housing? What I mean, to me, housing is permanent, relatively permanent, at least one month, permanent.
Residency.
Residency. I don't, as I said, I don't consider a motel to be a housing unit, it's a shelter. It's not a housing unit. If we could define housing for the town of Rockport as being a place of permanent residence, permanent being the operative word here, then we get to separate our long, our short-term rental and vacation rental issues from affordable housing, worker housing, density issues.
So-
But I don't know, I don't think we can.
But even based on the ideas that you introduced, Jan, I don't think you could just define it based on a period of time. As you suggested earlier, I think it needs to be based on a level of affordability, based on income levels.
Right.
So, that needs to be included in there also.
Right, well, in that case, you can't charge more than fifty-six dollars for your Airbnb.
And the state didn't address how you go about enforcing that?
No, it does not.
And they didn't even suggest, I mean, the municipality should.
But it says that half the units have to be available for rent or for sale, meeting affordability requirements and for-
Something that we can do, and I would propose that we have some workshops about this at a later date, but, you know, this aside, to get to a different ordinance that allows for increased density of a particular nature. So, if you're saying you're going to afford or have that affordability, then we can allow more, and that would be something contingent upon the approval of the planning board. That's something that you could do. But right now, with LD 2003 and the deadline of July 1, this is something that's real simple to get in the books.
Understood. And the other problem is this of not having to add additional parking spaces when you put in an accessory building in your spot.
Yes.
I don't know anybody that doesn't have, a family of four always has six cars, you know? A family of two has four cars. We're not, this is not a third-world country, we are a zero-world country. Where are they going to park?
They're going to park on the streets that are too narrow for, if they park on both sides.
Or they park on the property where they have their structure, on the front yard.
Yeah, they have to park, yeah.
And we can't get a fire truck through on the roads.
But that lets out having any sort of a development for worker housing.
I think this also gets back to the spirit of, how I interpreted it, the spirit of them saying accessory dwelling unit, and, all right, maybe I'm wrong, but it was almost assumed that that accessory was for someone who had some relation to the actual property owner, whether it's a, you know, housing your in-laws, or housing maybe workers, or housing your college-age student who moved back home, something like that. Is that what their intent was, or is it not?
Their intent is something around that, it's just not, it's not that clear.
It's not clear anywhere.
I didn't read it as being limited to family members.
It is not.
I don't think it is. But how I interpreted it was that that was the spirit of what they were trying to do, and maybe that was the reason why they weren't proposing more parking spaces.
If I could share maybe a little bit different perspective, when I first moved here, and I looked around at homes, I noticed that there were a large number of homes that had a separate self-contained apartment that was used for the primary residence to gain some additional revenue by renting out a space within the house. And I found that not to be uncommon, here Belfast, all up and down the mid-coast. So, it wasn't, at least from my understanding, it wasn't, in most cases, a family member. It was a source of income.
Yes.
So, that was what I observed, just based on looking at some of the real estate.
Oh, and do you know if the legislature keeps track of conversations and arguments around, surrounding a law, the kind of thing like the Supreme Court guys always like to look at, what the intent was? Is such a thing, is that available to anybody? Do you know if it exists?
I'm sure you can find plenty of recorded meetings discussing this very topic.
I'd like to invite Vicki DeDara down here to explain to us, maybe help us understand how we could implement them.
Yes. You could also invite Valley Geiger, who sponsored and created this.
Yeah, and who's our state senator these days?
Penny Beebe.
Oh, Penny, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I gave her five bucks, she better-
So, seriously, they may help us gain some insight as to what and how.
Yeah, they were trying to back some grant funding as well to help with this, but- Now, today's kind of the cutoff for this, for getting something on the ballot for June. So, I'd like us to kind of work through what would have typed up, proposed, and kind of eat that up and put something together, and if the board is pretty much unanimously against it, then-
And the reason, the reason, Ryan, I brought that up is because fundamentally here, it sounds like the majority of us are concerned about maintaining the affordability of it. It's not that what's here isn't good, but we need something in addition to this to maintain the affordability. If we don't have that, I think we're spending time here that's not going to be fruitful.
Well, I would disagree in that this allows us to see what's coming in. If someone is going to take advantage of LD 2003 and do short-term rentals with it, then we've got data now. And then we can see it.
To do what, though? This law doesn't allow us to-
No, it'll tell me what's coming in, and then we can, either come November or next June, interpret like what's really happening, and I can use that data to go against police reports, fire reports, all that stuff. And then we'll understand, is it an actual problem, or is it not a problem? And then I can also compare that with the businesses, are there housing now available with LD 2003, yes or no? I can poll them with that particular question.
But what would be different than, yeah, we just have water over the dam. What would be different that would allow us to implement some different standards?
The difference is, if we don't do anything now, then someone comes in and tells us, this is my interpretation of LD 2003.
Right.
This is what I'm going to do. And then we're going to say, well, we don't have an ordinance, so no, you're not, and then they're going to sue us, and then we're going to pay all this legal fight back and forth, so give a little here.
There's nothing today to say that we can't implement some policing to make sure that it's affordable, is that correct? There's nothing that said we can't do that.
No, there's nothing that says we can't do that.
So, we could include that.
For future meeting?
Yep.
Yes, we could, and that could be, like I said, with the density increase bonus. So, you wanted to do five, well, we only allow four, so in order to achieve that five, we'll permit it if you can agree to X number of rate. That's something that we can achieve.
Okay, let me propose something here, just to move forward. I'd suggest that we let Orion go ahead and walk us through his thoughts on the rest of this document. Even if we have some fundamental differences here, I think it's good to take this time, at least to understand the rest, the broader scope of it.
Sounds good.
I would agree, and I would offer the unhappy prospect of a workshop, a conversation, a meeting that just discusses, and maybe invite our local politicians or people from Augusta who can help us figure out, what does this really mean for us as a town? And how are we going to approach it? This is a very serious law.
Yes.
With, it looks to me like some things that were stuck in for special purposes or to make somebody happy. And we live in a destination area.
Yes.
And we're going to get ourselves in real trouble.
Yes.
If we don't pay a lot of attention to this.
Yes, and I'd rather, I'd rather us have something in our ordinance that we agree to.
I agree with you, I agree with you. Yeah, we do need that. And the deadline for getting something on the June ballot is sometime in April?
For planning board, this is the meeting, unless we can agree to meet again next week, and then we can talk again. But I, what's the next select board meeting? It's April 10th, I want to say, that is the meeting where they finalize-
They'll do the ward for that, yeah. Does not give us a whole lot of time.
No, and I would have preferred to have had these conversations earlier. The proposed rules were not posted until not that long ago.
Yeah.
So, I didn't feel comfortable with it in the air to go down this road, so.
So, I think that I could be able to agree with a lot of the other things that are in this document with some added assurances that it would be affordable. So, with that, can we just spend a few moments, go through the rest of this?
Okay. So, in our current ordinance, section 604, it's about inspection of rental dwelling units. This is the only thing really in our ordinance that discusses rental units, which is interesting to me. The only time an inspection happens, though, is at the sale of the property.
So, excuse me, I don't think, you're not changing anything here, are you? Are you just reciting this for information?
So, everything that's underlined-
Because when I looked at the ordinance, it's in there already.
Not the, not this, not short-term rentals and vacation rentals, and not short-term rentals and vacation rentals here. So, in section 604, I'm proposing to add this and this for clarity. And I was also proposing to put some registration around short-term rentals, but if we do that, then we would need to do it for everything, including long-term rentals, just registration. And what that would ensure is that a certificate of occupancy was done. However, by adding a definition and adding a use in our table, the certificate of occupancy will be satisfied. So, therefore, I don't, I don't have much to gain from making the registration requirement yet, or now, or for now. I would like to have registration numbers with short-term rentals and all rentals, just for verification, because there is a program that currently exists that I am purchasing that tells me where all short-term rentals are. It scours the internet, tells me everything I need to know, who owns them and the such. And if we have a registration requirement, then they are required to post that with it. So, then I'm able to filter who has registration numbers, who don't have registration numbers. And the ones who don't have registration numbers are more than likely going to be the ones who do not have certificate of occupancies. The certificate of occupancy really covers all of the health and safety concerns that we should concern ourselves with, which is your ingress, egress, and cleanliness, routine cleanliness of it. But by having that, it satisfies a lot of my concerns right now, and what my office currently at capacity can handle. So, trying to achieve something without creating a lot more paperwork, so it's a balance right now.
Okay, so the only thing you did to 604.1 there is just add short-term rentals and vacation rentals.
That's all I've added.
That's all.
And what you've seen before is adding this, I'm now proposing to take that out.
Ryan, can we go back to short-term rental definition? I highlighted in yellow some suggestions to your definition.
Okay. Living quarters offered for rental in the short term for a transient rental platform or otherwise. That doesn't, for right now, that doesn't seem to be terrible. I mean, it doesn't specifically say that-
Yeah, I mean, with praise?
It doesn't specifically say like three days or for no more than thirty days, but in short term.
In the definition of short-term rental, we don't even say short, any kind of, we don't clarify that this is, this is not long-term housing, this is not, this is not housing.
I see your point, I see your point. That could add the clarity, some clarity, for sure.
You know, I mean, there are short-term rentals where people come in and they'll rent it for the whole winter.
Yep.
I've, you know, certainly seen plenty of that. But at least this makes an attempt at distinguishing from the other kind of housing that this LD 2003 is trying to create, which is affordable.
Yes.
Long-term housing for workforce and, you know. People that are going to live here year-round.
Yeah, okay.
And then transient rental platform, just otherwise, it's like, you know, who the heck knows what other means people are going to come up with to rent stuff.
That's true.
Say thank you. Thanks for, thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming.
You don't want to stick around.
I'm going to go home and watch Jeopardy.
You are, well, enjoy it. All right, take care.
Nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Okay, so can I, can I go through the rest of it?
Sure, go through the rest, yeah, we're going to get hung up at a lot of parts here.
No, I know, but I'm.
The only bit that I've proposed a change in the parking table is to remove the per-dwelling unit here. It's just single-family dwellings, two parking spaces requirement. It, that's per-dwelling unit anyway. The accessory dwelling units themselves, no additional parking spaces are required. So that's just being added in.
The primary property owner would just have to figure out where they're going to park cars?
Yes.
Their property. Parking not allowed in the street.
We control, we control the public area, we control the streets, they have to deal with, with what they have to deal with.
I mean, that would be part of their investment to build accessory units.
Yeah, except we don't have the parking, we need to revise the parking ordinance, which we're not doing.
No, that's in the works, that, that, that doesn't go to the voters, that goes to the select board.
Yeah, let's, that's a different article, let's not go down there.
Back to, back to this, so in, in, in searching of our current ordinance, the only place it mentions accessory dwelling unit is in section 910.3D10AI. So if we're going to incorporate into our parking table about additional dwelling units, this would not be in compliance, so the proposal would be to delete that. And then in our land use table, because they already exist in these zones minus 909 and 916, I'm just proposing that we permit it in all of them except for these two zones.
Now, how, why are you doing that, and how's that related to LD 2003?
It, it is related to LD 2003 in that we know people will take advantage of LD 2003 for short-term rentals. So I don't want us getting hung up with an application coming before us utilizing LD 2003 for whatever purpose they want to use it for, and then not be able to get a permit or approval from the board if that is so warranted.
Okay, the other thing you do is make a conditional use.
Yes.
What does the P stand for?
Permitted.
Permitted, okay.
So it's not a conditional use, that would be CU.
Yeah.
I'm suggesting it could be.
So what this does is it basically clears the runway.
Right.
Well, it, it doesn't necessarily clear the runway in that sense, it, it already exists, people already do it in all of these zones. This is just saying, we see you, we see it's happening, then now it's permitted, make sure you get your permits.
And they're required to, sorry, but they're required to get a permit?
For an addition, for an accessory, oh, give me a second, I'm getting my, my terms twisted. Certificate of occupancy. If you're going to have a dwelling unit, you have to have a certificate of occupancy regardless of what you use it for, long-term rental, short-term rental, regardless.
So this will require them to get a certificate of occupancy?
They're, they're already required for a dwelling unit, but if you have a short-term rental, I don't 100% know if you've gotten one because of its current structure. If you've hidden it inside your existing building, I don't know if it's there. And if the assessor hasn't done an inspection of it, we don't know, so.
So an owner would have to apply for a permit to convert a dwelling unit to a, a short-term rental?
If they have a dwelling unit that's already in existence and they wanted to put it as a short-term rental, it's permitted. If they wanted to expand that dwelling unit, they would have to get a permit to do the renovation, and then they'd have to get their certificate of occupancy. So if they already have their certificate of occupancy, they can do a short-term rental.
The C of O doesn't distinguish between whether it's a dwelling unit or a short-term rental, is that correct?
So it's residential, so how we are treating dwelling units, they're all within residential. So multi-family duplex, all that stuff, it's all a dwelling unit. So short-term rental would just fit within that as well, right now.
As we treat rooming houses, motels, inns, dormitories differently.
They're, they're commercial. That is, that is. Yes.
They're businesses.
Yes.
Noted. Okay, go on.
And then, that is down here, okay. So in order to meet the second part of LD 2003, which is the up to four dwelling units. Now, it gets confusing within LD 2003 for if you have already a dwelling unit existing, then you couldn't get more than two dwelling units. But if you wanted to build something brand-new, you could get up to four dwelling units. So our current ordinance, how it's currently written, it can satisfy the existing, if you have an existing dwelling unit. That's not the concern, it's the, if you want to build new and you want to get up to four, how do we accommodate that? Our ordinance isn't structured to have that level of complexity, already owner, existing dwelling unit, and then brand-new. So just to kind of keep with the flow of it, I've included this to do, I think it was five, just to go a step above. If we want to reduce it down to only accommodate four, we can do that. It, the reason I do five is the, how do we count the accessory dwelling unit? Someone wants to do an accessory dwelling unit, then we can legitimately argue, they did four dwelling units and an accessory dwelling unit. We've covered that with the fifth.
So if I could just add a little bit of color to this, really the reason for the problem in section B is that if you go back up to table 918, section A, the first line, it tells you that for a single, minimum lot size for basically a single residential unit is 20,000 square feet.
Without sewer. Now, this is the other bit on this.
Okay, with sewer, without sewer, but my point is, that's a single one right there. And so now, when you go down to B, and B says for a multi-family with sewer, you need to be able to accommodate at least four, that's the math you're doing, and you're dividing the 20,000 square feet from table A by four.
Correct.
And that's how you're getting there, but I just want to make sure everybody understood that.
Yes.
So it's both of those tables that are working together here. You could equally as well have increased table A.
Could have.
But then that would make everybody less affordable.
Yes.
If you did that.
Yes. Now, the other bit to distinguish is septic versus sewer. If you're on septic, then you obviously don't, you can do a little bit of density, which is only two dwelling units. I think we should be very strict on that bit, and that's only if the current septic system can accommodate that. So the local plumbing inspector would make that determination. If you're tied into sewer, I think we should encourage density if you're tied into sewer, and this allows that to happen.
Okay, and so 2, 4, and 6 are growth zones today?
Yeah, so are growth zones per comprehensive plan, 902, 904, and 906.
Okay, so that's where you're required to be able to accommodate this, and you're proposing that we just go ahead and do it across the board?
No, it's, it's, it's growth zone or sewer.
Okay.
That's, that's the other bit that's confusing and not quite clear as to why they do what they do within it.
Okay, so if you're in a non-growth zone and you don't have sewer, then you're leaving it as it is?
If, if, sorry, let me, let me go back, this is, this is the current. If you're in not a growth zone and you're not on sewer.
2, 4, 6, so that'd be seven, let's take seven as an example.
Yep, so that one I've, so 20,000, I think that's sending 20,000 across the board. 907 is 40. So that would allow them to get up to four.
I'm sorry, four?
Minimum lot size without sewer, the proposal, oops, sorry.
I think you proposed 10, so that would be four.
So that would allow four.
So even in a non-growth zone, you're going ahead and just modifying it across the board? Right?
Yes, but this also, I mean, you'd have to have the ability with your septic system to achieve this regardless.
Okay, and so everything you've just said about, there's a whole bunch of conditions in this area. How complicated do we want to make our ordinance? Or do we just make it to cover the most extreme case of four housing units per lot? And just make everything fit that way? And that would be kind of the most liberal interpretation.
Yeah.
If we did that. So that's just an open rhetorical question right now. Okay, so those are the changes. And so I'll say that on the surface, I probably don't have much issue with those changes. I admire the goals that they're trying to achieve in setting forth some affordable housing. I just don't know that it's going to guarantee it, and I just see that this whole thing could go awry without any affordable enforcement.
Yes.
That's my concern.
And I'd build on that a little bit, Ryan. If it does go awry, and we see, oh, that's, you know, going sideways in a way we never wanted it to, and how do we, you know, we want to reel it in, but if it, by then the accessory units are built.
Yeah, you're not going to come back from it.
Yeah, they're, they're going to be grandfathered in, so it could wave in this flood of.
It wouldn't, the regulatory aspect would probably come into play. If people take advantage of it and it turns into a catastrophe, I mean, we would get resounding support for regulation.
Yeah, but I still think everything would be grandfathered in.
They, they would be grandfathered in for the density aspect of it, but the regulatory aspect, I mean, we would be able to hold them more accountable to the problems that they're creating.
Such as?
Whatever it is that you're proposing, that, are you talking about the affordability bit of it? That's what you're talking about?
Well, or that they've all turned into short-term rentals.
I don't know, they would be grandfathered in at least for the use of it, they'd be grandfathered in for the density of it. I don't know about, I don't know about the rental bit.
I think as we consider this, maybe we accommodate short-term rentals, but also in some way assure that some units are affordable and maintained as affordable rentals. I'm not looking to prevent short-term rentals, I just want to make sure that there's affordable rentals also. That's really my concern.
Yeah, and I, and I share that concern and more, but how do we do that?
I don't, so.
That's going to be a careful conversation with an attorney.
I mean, is affordable, I mean, I would even take exception to that. Why do short-term rentals have to be affordable?
I didn't say, I didn't mean to say they are.
Oh, that's, I thought that's what you said. You said you didn't mind short-term rentals as long as they were affordable.
There were, there were also.
In addition, there is also affordable. I'm not trying, I'm not opposed to short-term rentals. But additionally, this legislation needs to help us achieve the intent of affordable housing also.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to shut anything down, I just want to make sure.
Completely from short-term rentals, I don't think it has anything to do with short-term.
Short-term rentals could be affordable too.
No, it, it only has something to do with short-term rentals to my mind in that it opens, you know, it encourages short-term rentals instead of what I think its intent was, which is to encourage affordable housing.
Yeah, I mean, to me, the intent should be long-term affordable housing. In other words, minimum one-year lease, you know? Somebody who's, who's working and living in the area, they're not going to rent it for 30 days.
No, no, and like I said, I, there are businesses that will take advantage of this to accommodate their workers, that, that will come.
Yeah, I think we also need to be mindful of, there are exceptions, traveling nurses, seasonal workers like that, that could be renting by our definition of short-term, but.
They're really good enough price of it.
We could debate what's the proper length of time here, but there's clearly a difference between a short, you know, a couple nights, a week.
Yeah.
Versus months, you know?
I, I, I don't even, I don't know, I don't think the time element's that important. I'm concerned about the affordability. Rent it for any amount of time you want, but it needs to be affordable, whether it's by day, the night, the year, whatever, it needs to be affordable. That's the intent. If somebody wanted to open a short-term rental and rent it for whatever you came out with, $52 a night, it's great.
They'd never make any money when that, that would be good, because it would be a terrible business.
Not going to be doing it.
Okay, so where are we going to move forward, how are we going to move forward on this, Orion? I don't think we're going to resolve this, this evening by itself. I feel something down there, thank you.
Sure you don't want to be a member?
This particular conversation, if you're even willing to have me after the comments point.
No, I'm just.
No, I, I would, there's a reason.
Uh-oh.
Don't tell Joe that.
But I think if I offer just a citizen's approach to this, I think what he said is right, is that this was something that needed to get through because a lot of people understood the undercoordinated part of this. And to make that happen, some other things got slipped onto it, which will indeed let the horse out the barn before anybody can do anything to reel it back in.
Yep.
I think that was done by design, and I think that you guys are looking very carefully for a way to not get hamstrung by that, and you're not going to find one because that's how they did it. And I, yes, there's the risk of all those issues and stuff, and will we have the ability to come after this fact? But I think what Orion's doing in trying to get ahead of it and not have us face yet another lawsuit of somebody trying to get something done the way they want to in this town and without us having planned it beforehand, is the right way to handle it. There is no amount of wrangling that you will find that will satisfy what you're looking for and still be in compliance with that law. And I think that was his point, I'm not trying to get across, but like, we can try. We can go across and having, and talking to the state reps makes a ton of sense as well. But I think like his point is, where we are on the timeline and where we need to be to protect ourselves as a community, strictly from somebody trying to come in and take advantage of this piece, needs to be what we have kind of here, and it needs to be like through so that we can get onto the ballot for June.
So did you guys meet beforehand accordingly?
I've just been paying attention.
Well, to use the anecdote of opening the door to things perhaps we don't want, I mean, the open door is sort of the only tool that we have, the door is going to be open whether we like it or not, is that can we open the door wider for the things we do want to encourage? Because that we're allowed to do, we're allowed to incentivize.
Can, and I.
Other beyond what they're suggesting.
We can, and I, I would like to do that, so that's why this has been crafted as carefully as I possibly could to do something that covers those bases of LD 2003, so that we don't have to go through a lawsuit. We will probably go through a lawsuit anyway, but we would at least have something here saying, we've got this covered, this is our interpretation of it, and we'll take it to the bank. Come November, we might have something in there that talks about what you're concerned with, you know? The extra affordability of it. We'll allow you to do more density if you can secure or insure us through whatever measure. And I don't quite know how that would look, because with a short-term rental, the lease agreement's very short, it's very confined with that. But let's just say it's not a short-term rental, let's just say it's a yearly rental, like you said, or a six-month rental, it's just a seasonal rental. There could be, I mean, a requirement where they show a lease agreement to that. And that shows the price of it, then if the planning board agrees to that, then it allows the extra density. That, that can happen. That would be a density bonus that we could work through.
I don't, I don't think the town is, any town is set up to police this right now, though.
No.
I don't think they could handle affordability.
Large city.
Yeah, right, I, when I think of rent control, I think of New York City.
I would say that the reason that they left those definitions in state is that they did, knowing the municipalities that the policies would have to get made in terms of being compliant with it was probably done in most all areas. Because I would have all the stuff in advance. And so again, I think very similarly to what I brought in there in the first place.
You're about to get, you're getting a microphone.
Okay, so.
This. This law is written very specifically to keep you guys from being able to try to do these types of things right off the bat. And I, for better or for worse, I think that's the piece of it, but not moving ourselves into a position to be lined up with it when we possibly can opens ourselves up to bigger liability than not having good definitions going into it, knowing that nobody has good definitions going into it. That's my piece, that's.
So Orion, hundreds of towns have the same charge before them.
Yep.
How much did you incorporate what you're seeing your counterparts doing in other towns into your thought? Into your suggestions, like where are you seeing them going? I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, many municipalities are choosing the stance of not doing anything. And I think they're going to not like the outcome of that. Some municipalities are trying, they're going to give it their best effort. To the exact language, I don't know, because their ordinances are structured very differently than ours. They're a little more convoluted. So, just taking into what everyone knows, which is what everyone is sharing, that it's going to be used for short-term rentals. They already have something in place currently to regulate though. Not to the affordability aspect of it, but to regulate the short-term rentals. We don't have that. Only thing we can do is.
Other towns have that, right?
Other municipalities already have short-term rental regulations, so they're not particularly worried about that because they already have a cap. Some of them have a cap, so they're not worried about that aspect of it.
Okay, in order to make this modification, we would need to propose a ordinance change. We would need to send select board, select board would approve to put it on a warrant. What happens if the voters reject it?
Then we are out of compliance with LD 2003. But on record though.
The community is going.
On record though, it, it, it shows that not only did we try with the ordinance review committee, because I've got minutes for that. I tried with the planning board and you all, you know, gave this a good mulling over. The select board agreed with your recommendations and the voters might have said no. Like, I mean, there's a clear evidence that we gave it a good filing, filing effort, so. With that, I really encourage us to, if we want to amend this further, that's amended to where we're happy, but we should have something on the ballot.
I, I think this discussion tonight was good. I think a lot of people shared their perspectives, public and amongst the board. I think we need to go off and think about this for a few more days and, and try to get together next week again, just on this one topic.
Owen, do you think the main municipal association has a position on LD 2003?
I will not comment.
Oh, well, I could, okay. I've talked to some of the people that were involved with this legislation. And my understanding is the main municipal association got involved afterwards and is actually driving the, how do I say this? They're, they're the ones that introduced the, the aspects that opened the door to short-term rentals by modifying the language. So they're, they're a pro, you know, kick open the door group. That's my impression and that's based on people that I know have dealt with this legislation as it was getting crafted.
Oh.
But that, you know, that's in the category of hearsay, Jan.
Yeah.
But I don't think the main municipal association is, would, would support our particular concerns.
Gotcha.
So I guess, Joe, and I guess the rest of the board.
Crush that off.
You've all read through this and I guess, you know, we've had our meeting, we've been able to talk about it, so I'm, I'm not sure clarity will come in the next couple of days. And I don't want to rush the board's decision at all, so if we want to postpone this to a few days sometime next week, let's do that. But what I've proposed here, what gives you the most heartburn? I guess is what I would like to know.
I let everybody speak for themselves. I guess in my case, I don't have a lot of problems with what you've proposed here. I got a little bit of problem maybe with definitions, clean those up a little bit. My concern is what's not included here, and that is anything that would assure that the properties are maintained as being affordable. So that's my concern.
Let's say, let's say we had the perfect language in there to do that. I don't know how I would enforce it right now. I don't have a budget to hire somebody to knock on doors and just make sure that happens. And they would just do it anyway. And even if we had that capability of reining them in, they would just fight us in a lawsuit as well. So I'm not saying like we just let them do it, but I'm saying I don't know the correct steps to regulate it in that sense.
Is there, in general, not just in Rockport, but in general, is there a property tax? Property tax allowance for developments that are affordable?
That would be a question for the assessor. I think everything right now is taxed, you know, just your valuation in the middle rate and that doesn't change. The valuation of the property and what gets taxed there could change. And if you have a homestead exemption, you get some discount on that. There's a few other items as well that can go into play on that depending on a few items. There could be something that I'm not familiar with that the assessor would know.
Because I wonder, I mean, if you, if you, if you, if you're a landlord and you raise the rents, your property tax doesn't go up. It doesn't, it doesn't make any difference. But maybe if you're doing something affordable, maybe we could make a property tax concession to people who do affordable housing.
I agree with that. I'd rather incentivize people to do the desired thing.
I, I would be more in favor of an incentive aspect and that's something we can, you know, that, that's going to take time.
Of course, no, no, we can't get that done in time. But we can think about what we can do to manage what we are having to live with.
Yes.
What does the, what does our legal counsel say about all this, Orion?
Try to get it implemented. That's, that's, that's the counsel. And to focus on the dwelling units. He says right now, the timeframe, you won't get the first section of the affordable housing subdivision because of its confusion. You won't get that implemented. But try your best to get it implemented for the dwelling units.
So I would, I would propose that we do a continuance to consider this at a future meeting. Because my concern is that if we were to vote tonight, that it wouldn't have a desirable outcome.
On, on the proposed tier, on what I have?
Yeah.
Can we do, I don't know, I don't want to call anybody out. I really want to know, I, I get the general sense of it, you know, the affordability. We know they're going to take advantage of it for the short term, but, for the short-term rental, but.
Let me step back just for a moment, which is to go over the process of this again. So if we vote to recommend these changes, you take this to the select board, then it goes to the, to town warrant.
Correct.
Be voted on by the voters.
Correct.
June town meeting.
Yes.
Does the language in here, I mean, do we, if we were in favor of recommending this, should we take into account that it's a document that's going to undergo public scrutiny? And if our goal is to have something that is incorporated into the land use ordinance, shouldn't we look at it as what is going to be most favorable to be approved by the general public? And I think about things like having the language of short-term rental even in there is going to be a lightning rod for people, especially in Rockport, to look at this and say, hey, no, I don't want.
I've already, I've already reached out to a few people, because I know this is an hot topic item. And I've shared the initial definition with them before I sent it to you all. They said, no, no. And so said, okay, we've got a problem. They agree that LD 2003, they just flat out agree that LD 2003 will be taken advantage of by short-term rentals. They know that. And they agree with what we're trying to do to incorporate it. They agree with the language that I've proposed here, that this is not viewed as a regulatory item and it's not viewed as something that's going to conflict with what they're doing already. So it's, it's neutral ground right now. So I don't, I don't think we'll have opposition of approving it. Does that mean I agree with LD 2003 in the short-term rental aspect of it? No, I don't agree with that. I just don't, I'm trying to avoid an inevitable lawsuit.
And I don't think anybody wants that, certainly.
What does preemptively reducing the dimensional requirements? What, what is the purpose of that?
The dimensional table?
Yeah.
So it's just to achieve that number of dwelling units?
Would that affect in any way the ability to subdivide your property?
So if you take, this is, this is the other reason why I really want something in there. Because if someone does three dwelling units or more in a single building, that's a subdivision. So that comes before the planning board. Now, if they don't extend the building footprint, they don't have to be reviewed under subdivision ordinance. It can be just reviewed under site plan, but there's uses associated with that and a description that they'd have to give. And they would say it's going to be a rental of some sort and you all will vet this out and you'll determine it's short-term rentals and you're going to have a hard time approving that if we don't have something in here to properly review it under.
But I guess I'm wondering if you could, you know, if you originally had a, what is it? The 20,000 square foot piece of property? But then you're saying the requirement is 4,000 now. Could you, what's preventing someone from trying to split their property and selling it to?
On sewer, on sewers, 12,000 and then.
Or whatever it is, just.
They can split it as long as they have the correct dimensional requirements to do that. There's, there's, that exists already today.
So this wouldn't in any way affect the current subdivision requirements?
Right now, no, no. And it doesn't change the minimum lot size requirements right now? That stays the same.
I don't feel like I've spent enough time looking around at what other people are doing this. I just, maybe I need to be convinced that other people have the exact same problem and they're not finding a way to deal with it. But I guess I'd just like that extra.
I don't know the legality of putting something in our ordinance to regulate the price that they charge. Now, this is where I was getting at with the agreement, mutual agreement, that they're going to charge something affordable and they could probably link it to the definition and that's not getting in too much of the weeds. Like they will agree to conform to our definition of affordable housing unit. And in exchange for extra density, that's something we could potentially do. But for the regulatory aspect of saying you can only charge X, that, that, that's dangerous for us. So I agree with everyone's concerns.
I don't know, maybe if you look at a model like down in Portland where they have much more experience with this type of thing. And I know there's certainly a lot of controversy from what I see in the news about rents down there also. I don't know, maybe there's something we could learn though as to something we could do as an incentive to provide positive influence on people doing the right thing.
Just enacted rent control.
Do they, yeah.
I don't, yeah.
And so as a city, they could probably police that much better certainly than we're able to in a small township.
So I guess, I really just want to know, like, what do we need to do to this? Like, what do we need to focus on for the next meeting so that we can collectively make a recommendation by the board?
I can jump in just real fast with it, given what this looks like and where it is inside of the community. If I was looking at a ballot and it said the planning board approves or disapproves this or recommends or doesn't recommends this at four to two or three to three, I think that'd be pretty representative of what this community is looking at, the same problem. It would probably make sense to me if I'm looking at it the way they weren't all, everybody was lined up on everything and everybody was lined up on the other. Because I don't think you could get everybody in this town lined up on one thing that has to do with this.
That's correct.
Yep.
So seeing that on the ballot, I know like it's, it's nice to see all on one and all and none on the other. And the same for the planning board and the, and the select board matched up as I go through it. Makes my life easy as I go down through the ballots as well. But, and this is a sticky topic and sticky topics don't necessarily need unanimous recommendations. I think there should be dissent inside of this piece for this, for the very reasons that, you know, your affordability side, the short-term rental side, the density side, whatever those different pieces are, for sure. If that helps at all in terms of trying to line up what the vote will actually be and when that is on its own. But understanding, but seeing this, the amount of, if I looked at that and saw that everybody was lined up all on the same side on this particular thing, how modified has that been like mushed down in order to make that happen, right? Like compared to how this got in place in the first place, right? Like why this is here? The short-term part of this got slipped in because the affordable part of it was something that needed to happen. And so that's when they made this law to try to make it work. That's the special interest beast that got across to it. But I think that's the point and I think that's, that should be acknowledged. And if that's acknowledged through the recommendation from the planning board, then the people should be able to see that. And I know, you know, I mean, we have me and nobody online tonight talking during this conversation. But that is the fastest way for your views on that to be put in front of everybody in the community that votes. And, and it's, it's on that, on that ballot. And I know this is a tricky piece, but looking for unanimous on this might not be what we're looking for in terms of how it's going to go through.
Well, I think one of, one of the issues is that I don't think the change or the language that you've proposed, Ryan, it's not necessarily a problem with your language, it's a problem with the damn bill.
And the ordinance review committee would agree with you as well.
That's where we're all bumping. You know, we're spending a lot of time arguing here, but frankly, you know, we think the whole piece of legislation is gobbledygook.
Well, and so we need to try to find a way to work with it to make it the best.
And what's going to change? We're not going to change the legislation. You know, we're opening the town up, we're creating exposure for the town if we don't put something through.
Right, I kind of feel like in the interim.
Like, do we come back?
I don't necessarily think there's anything too objectionable about this. And also, anything that we would object to, I don't think in, in, in what's written. I don't necessarily think we have any grounds to, because there's this piece of legislation that kind of, we're bound to.
Yeah.
No, it's what it doesn't say.
And do we try?
But I think it's our.
We can say more.
Yeah.
And can we come back and, you know, try to tackle it another day?
Yeah, I think, at this point, I think.
I believe I'm saying this, by the way.
At this point, I think we need to have, before the next select board meeting, something for the warrant. And I think it's going to be, I think it might be, should be, possibly could be what Owen has presented. And go with that for the time for now, to have some rules set up and some acceptance from the, from the public. And that our next job is then to figure out how do we preserve the integrity of the town that we want by either nibbling around the edges of this in ways that, that, that the legislature allows? Or by simply passing other ordinances that do some control, like a property tax abatement for, for people who actually produce affordable housing? Or a way of controlling and taxing income from short-term rentals better than we're doing. We can't do it through police knocking on doors, but we have, between now and November at least, time to think of what the next step to protect the town needs to be.
You understand, we don't have the authority here to do that. We could recommend that to the voters.
That's my point. At this point, we, we have to turn ourselves into a think tank. And make recommendations to people through other committees.
But in support of what Orion was saying earlier, right now, we don't even have a definition in the town of a short-term rental to begin to even go in and distinguish them from any other enterprise.
I wonder if any town has a definition.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Camden does.
Camden, that's what it.
Camden does, Rockland does, Rockland's got a cap on it.
What do they use?
We need to go.
We need to go find out what they use. Because it, it's just, it's a placeholder for now. It's something that can be changed. I mean, people are going to vote based on not, having been a voter for more than 50 years, not going to base it on reading all the details, but rather on looking at the outline and seeing what the accept reject rate is. And my personal opinion of what do I think of the select board? Or what do I think of the planning board? And, and do I trust them on this? So we're going to put something up now and people are going to vote on it. And then we're going to come back. So we're gonna put something up now and people are gonna vote on it, and then we're gonna come back and put up other things. Or we're gonna ask the select board to put up other things, and in the meantime, we have a chance to turn, to, to, to make a little think tank. Between us and between other committees or, or, or people that, that Owen knows, our legislators. What Camden does, what Rockland does. We, we, we just have conveniently enough, we have no time to do anything beyond a basic response, Pavlovian response to this. They hand me a dog biscuit, I'll eat it. Don't know that it's poisoned. Now I have time to think about what can we do about that. So I think we're gonna need something, I think Orion is exactly right, we have to put something on the ballot. And we have his proposal, which is the, which is good. It doesn't cover everything, but we can't cover everything because of the way the laws be written. So we have, we have to figure out what our finagle is to get around what we want.
What I propose covers the, the dwelling unit to the additional accessory dwelling unit, that, that it covers.
Whatever gets proposed now can be unproposed at a future date. We're not doing anything here that's etched in stone.
Correct.
It's all recoverable, but if we make the mistake of not doing anything, we're going to end up in, in a court.
Correct.
Yeah, and nobody wants to do that.
And nobody wants to do that.
Either way, we'll probably end up there, but yeah.
So you, we can do a vote. And if that vote is not in favor of this right now, then we can meet again next week with something else. This vote is just a recommendation. Do you wanna recommend this to the select board if not?
I'm not seeing what we would change in a week.
We can't recommend, we can't take a vote on anything unless we've announced that meeting and it is zoomed and it's public.
The continuance is what we would issue. The continuance would cover us for that.
Okay, well, the, and the public comment period has already been done.
It's already done.
You don't need to do another public comment.
Correct.
Um, not that I'm against public comment. So how, I, I'm just wondering how members feel, how much they feel that one week's additional time would allow the ability to research adjacent, nearby towns that have crafted a short term rental ordinance or are working on this kind of thing that would allow them to say, modify Orion's text to the benefit of this group. Joe, you seem to want an additional week to educate yourself.
I just feel that this is a very important subject. And I guess I just wanna feel more comfortable with a, a recommendation that I would make. And so I would spend some time researching it over the next week. And I mean, maybe there are some little glimmers of how you can make it more, more favorable to achieving affordability. Maybe I'll find that there's absolutely nothing that anyone can do to achieve that right now and that we just have to move forward. So I, I, I'm just not comfortable with it right now. I mean, I read this a lot, I read all the material we have in front of us a lot. I think I understand it very well. I'm not comfortable with it though. That's just me.
So what's the latest we can go with this in terms of the calendar?
Well, we'd have to get it on the select board's agenda. That's the cutoff for them.
Can we put it on the agenda and then cancel it if we don't?
That'd be your recommendation and, and I think.
Excuse me, couldn't the select board go forward with this anyway?
They technically could, yeah.
Absent a planning board recommendation.
But they might not. They could. I could take this to them.
And I'm not suggesting that's what we do, but I'm just saying that's, that's possible.
I'd much rather have you all say but.
Absolutely, I agree.
Yeah, that, that wouldn't look good either.
No good options.
The optics are not really bad.
No good options. But taking a step into it and then taking the time over the course of, you know, the many months we have to get something better for November, I think is the best option. This allows us to make those steps. November, the November one is gonna include the first bit. If this LD two thousand three in fact actually continues to live, which it probably will. Then the affordable housing, well, we'll be doing some work to our subdivision ordinance as well, I'm getting at. To accommodate the affordable housing subdivision part of this.
So this is gonna be voted on by over at the town office in June. If it gets on the town warrant, it's not gonna be a town meeting.
No. Hold up the card. It'll be on the ballot.
Okay.
Well, do a straw poll to see who would like to vote and who would tonight and who wants to gather some more information.
Sure.
Jan? Tonight or?
No, I, I'm perfectly willing, we can get a continuance, we can do it legally. I would rather have a, a weekend to spend time and another conversation with you guys before we vote.
Yes, I don't wanna vote tonight.
I'd prefer a week.
A week?
I'm happy to do a week.
Okay, let's look at some calendars.
And I assume everyone can make themselves available next week.
I hope so.
Looking at Thursday of next week.
That could be good, let's see.
That's a good question.
Thursday next week works for me.
That's the thirtieth.
The thirtieth?
Yep, everybody will count the thirtieth?
Uh, five thirty.
Five thirty?
Same time, same place.
I cannot guarantee here, I would need to double check with the library to make sure that this is open. I don't know if their calendar's posted, let me check. It's posted. We're, we're available here?
I'm gonna guess, but you, you're right, you have to go through channels.
Yeah, so I would say contingent upon location. It could be, well, I don't wanna have this meeting via Zoom, so it'll either be here. Jeff, could we do this anywhere else? Here, okay.
Their, their busy days are Wednesdays and Saturdays, Thursdays, okay. And it doesn't conflict with anything else around the area.
Let me just check, see if they have a calendar online real quick.
Well, the other thing is that this room, the library is closed by the time this meeting goes on.
That is true. It's March thirtieth, yeah, they have a tech tutor hour, that's the only thing, but that wouldn't be down here. So I would say based on the calendar that's presented, we can meet here again next Thursday at five thirty.
And I would encourage everyone to do some additional research, think about it.
Oh yeah, you just lost up my weekend.
So that was item five. Other business, I do have one item I'd like to bring up and it doesn't need a decision tonight. But we do need a representative on O R C, on the planning board. There is a assigned seat on O R C.
There's actually two seats open.
Four planning board members. I've in the past attended it. Usually the majority of their work, it used to be, I don't know if it still is, but it used to be in the, the late winter, early spring.
Yeah, that's changed.
Has it? Okay.
Just because of all the ordinances we have, we do.
Year round?
It's, it's pretty much year round, but we gear it up for two seasons so that we can get something on the June ballots.
Well, you're geared for November and June ballots, right, to get stuff on, yeah, right.
But we, we meet year round.
And they still meet, what, eight o'clock on Wednesday morning and?
It depends on availability.
Yeah, whatever. My experience was they were pretty prompt on one hour also.
They're prompt on one hour.
Yep.
Yep.
And so it doesn't, it's not a run on meeting. So again, I don't need an answer tonight, but please think about it if you'd like to take on that additional task, that would be greatly appreciated. And then basically what you're doing is you're representing the planning board in opinions that you expressed there. And then also you're our liaison, so to speak, in that when we have our meetings, you'll bring back, hey, this is being discussed, this is a problem. Are there any other things that we'd like O R C to consider? And then you would bring them back there, so it's bidirectional.
So we have a select board liaison, but he doesn't ever come to the meetings. So.
It's fine.
Okay.
They don't, they don't have to come to the meeting, but that in essence is if, if you have something of a problem, you'd go, that'd be the person to contact. That really is it. And if the board has something to say, that's kinda like your person, can you make sure that gets to the select board? I'm not feeling lonely.
Orion, would it be proper to do a, just a vote for continuance?
Yes, that would be encouraged.
Okay, so I'd like to propose that we do a continuance on consideration of modifications resulting from LD two thousand three. All in favor? Okay, six zero zero.
And last thing, do we wanna, we feel it's of use to invite any of the legislators to next week's?
I will invite our attorney. I don't know about the legislator.
It'd be great if we get Vicky down here.
I will, I'll extend an invitation to her. She might show up, but I will extend an invitation.
Know a lot more about it. She originally.
Yeah, I mean, just some insight, yeah.
Well, she wrote it originally and then.
Oh, she did?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
Well, then she's the one. That would be best.
So here's what I'll do, I'll talk to our attorney about it and if he's in agreement that that won't cause a lot of confusion, then I'll extend those invitations. I don't want us to muddy the water even more, so I don't. I wanna get through it. But I think our attorney would be the best guidance for this and if he agrees that those other people being a part of the meeting is beneficial, then we can extend that invitation.
Do we want the attorney?
I know you want him.
No, he's gonna give, yeah, no, he's gonna give us a legal opinion.
He's gonna give a legal opinion, yes.
Yeah, and so there's different perspectives other than just legal.
Different, there is, anyway.
Do we wanna invite him to the meeting or her to the meeting, or do we wanna spend next week writing up the questions after that meeting to give to them to save time?
That would be a good thing, maybe if we express our concerns and just forward them to Orion and then Orion could share those with Phil.
If you can do that over the weekend, send that to me. I'll email him tomorrow so that he expects it.
Not this weekend, but, but after the, after our meeting next Thursday. Take a list of our concerns to the, to the attorney, or is that not a good idea?
No, cause like next Thursday, we need to have a vote. Next Thursday, we need to vote on this.
Okay, all right, and we'll let you do it your way.
But, but still, if you have concerns that you wanna forward, just so he has time to consider them, that would be a good thing.
Okay.
Before we meet with them. So you're saying the deadline is Monday morning for that, if you have anything you wanna get at?
If, yeah, if you wanna get something to the attorney, I will email him tomorrow saying that y'all are really looking this over. Heads up, Monday, you're gonna get something, if you could be prepared to attend our meeting on Thursday. Hopefully he can. If he can't, then someone else will, but.
We can also hybrid them a minute.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, any other items for this evening? Okay, motion to adjourn.
Actually move?
Move by Jan and second by John. All in favor? Okay, six zero zero and the meeting is adjourned at eight thirteen.